Item number four is reports of the mayor. Mayor Farrell, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Shockley, and hello, everyone. The mayor's report, I just have two items today. The first is a report of our Huntington Police Department. Since we last met at our regular council meeting two weeks ago, I wanted to report some of the activity that's been going on in the city. Because there are five shooting investigations. One involving an officer-involved shooting and one murder. There are three deceased persons investigations, not including the two that I mentioned above. There is one armed robbery and one non-fatal stabbing. And then just this morning, this afternoon, the Department of Health and Human Resources put out a notice that in Cabo County, there's an overdose spike. And what that means is that there are lethal chemicals in the drug supply right now. I tell you all that to say that we have a dangerous city at times. And the reason that it can be kept safe is because of the work the men and women at the Huntington Police Department do in conjunction with the sheriff, the Cabo County, the state police, the criminal justice system, including the county prosecutor, and all the men and women that work so hard to keep us safe. And so, I want to thank them. I want to thank them publicly for what they do because they put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe, and it means a lot. The second thing is more exciting, something that truly brings me joy. And tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., I invite all of you to join me at the auditorium of the Brad D. Smith School of Business, where there will be an exciting announcement that will have significant impact on Huntington and the broader economic landscape of West Virginia. It'll highlight the importance of Marshall University, not only to the educational benefits to everyone here in the community, but also as a prosperity platform that will drive new jobs and economic growth right here in our town. And it will be, it'll be really exciting. I am so very hopeful that all of you will come because it, what is happening in this city, it's an inflection point. And so many good things are going to happen. And this is just the start. So, please join us if you can. And that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is the second reading of an ordinance, 2025-0-01. Ms. Atkins.
An ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting the zoning ordinance of the City of Huntington, West Virginia, 1998, as revised and the zoning map as revised, attached thereto as a part thereof by zoning to I-1 Light Industrial Commercial District from R-2 Single Family Residential District, seven parcels located on the 600 block of Monroe Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ali Lehman, a second by Ms. Teresa Johnson.
Good evening, members of council. Kathy Burns, Development and Planning. I would just add to that description that we've also provided for your review the map highlighting the area proposed for rezoning. This rezoning aligns with how the properties are currently being used. The petitioner is Quantum Properties, also doing business as Richwood Industries. We consider this a minor boundary adjustment. The rezoning aligns with the comprehensive plan of 2035 as well as the future land use map. The Planning Commission met on February the 3rd and voted to forward this petition with a favorable recommendation based upon a unanimous vote, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of council from Ms. Kathy Burns?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's your new grandbaby's name?
Oh.
Today, right? Yeah.
Today, yes. My third grandson, thank you. Very Scottish name. Lachlan Burns Reed.
I love it.
Anyone from the public? Can I have a committee report, please?
We move this to executive session with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
Ms. Holly?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumball?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney, absent. Ms. Walling?
Yes.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Flau?
Yes.
And Mr. Shockley?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved. Item number six is the first reading of an ordinance, 2025-0-08. Ms. Atkins.
2025-0-08 Sewer Use Ordinance.
Mr. Brian Bracy.
Mr. Chair, fellow council members. Brian Bracy, Executive Director of the Huntington Water Quality Board. Before you is the first reading of the ordinance, the sewer use ordinance itself. The purpose of this is to update the actions that council has previously taken relative to one of the items was a rate increase. This is not a rate increase for the public. This is updating the sewer use ordinance. It is a requirement for the Department of Environmental Protection, and I'm happy to answer any questions. You should note, one thing in there, we did a couple of typos that we corrected in the sewer use ordinance itself as well. And you'll see those edits.
Any questions for Mr. Bracy? All right, we'll move it to the second reading. Item number seven is a resolution, 2025-R-23. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to provide consulting services to the Department of Development and Planning.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to make a motion to amend the amount from $70,000 to $50,000.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion is approved. Ms. Kathy Burns.
Good evening again. This resolution, the city placed out for proposals, specialized consulting work to assist with our development office and the administration of our home dollars, our community development block grant dollars, and our emergency services funds. Urban Design Venture was the successful respondent. This is a one-year contract with the ability to renew for an additional four years. It's not a retainer. We are billed based on services rendered. And the, some of the reports that we're required to do include a five-year consolidated plan, an annual action plan, and a consolidated annual performance and evaluation plan, which is, they call a CAPR. So, those are just some of the specialized needs for this service, these services. One other important point, the source of funds to pay this will be out of the admin line of the block grant program. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kathy Burns? Outside of grandbabies.
Chair, I have a question. So, two weeks ago, when we last or had the first reading, or this was under consideration, you had said, you gave us an update from a federal standpoint that some stuff was on again, off again, on again, off again. And since then, there had been an update on earmarks for the city. Since this involved CDBG funding, but like, there was like a caveat. Do you have any update for us?
Nothing new. The, there was a continuing resolution approved by Congress. We will not anticipate that our funding for the fiscal year that we're talking about would be approved until later this summer, is what we're anticipating. Right now, it's just a continuing resolution, and everything's just kind of holding course for now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the resolution is approved. The next item is item 8A. Is the public hearing for the resolution 2025-R-24. Is anyone from the public here to speak?
We have two.
Yes, ma'am.
Briefly, I am opposed to this plan in its current form for one simple reason. It was explained to me that having a specific boundary within a city is how these things are supposed to be done. But I found it interesting that when we were citing examples of this type of economic entity, all but one of the examples were entire counties. I think it would be more beneficial if Huntington partnered with Cabo County and bring all of our resources to the table instead of just carving a little district area within our city to suck up whatever tax finances and economic development we can. It seems like Huntington always likes to do everything by itself. If we had worked with a county, we would have had county recycling 20 years ago. And there are other examples that I think it'd be more beneficial if we went back and said, went to the county commission and said, can we do this together? Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of council, just for the record, I just want to clarify. There are five sales tax districts in the state, none of which include an entire county. So, there's one in a municipality, municipality, which is in South Charleston. The other four are in the areas of the county. But these have to be very strategic. The boundaries are not allowed to include the entire county. Western legislature has to approve these. They're not willing to give up those sales tax for an entire area like that. So, I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. And our, our next speaker, Ms. Atkins.
Oh, mayor and council and visitors. I did want to say a few words in advance of the creation of this new Economic Development District. I am in favor of this. I see this as a great opportunity to continue the work that has been done in the past years to build Huntington up as a place to see and do some really great things. And I'd like to go back to my last time I was up here and urge the city to support the work that's been done at the arena, at Marshall Health Network Arena. And from an infrastructure standpoint, that's works included some much-needed renovations that have helped us look much more favorable to our, to the tour bookers and to our frequent renters and to our frequent and first-time guests. But at the end of the day, it is a nearly 50-year-old building, and that is, work is seemingly never-ending to keep competitive with the other venues in this region. And with continued success of the Charleston Civic Center complex that had $100 million put into it a few years ago, and recent progress moving forward on a, what would be a new 30,000-square-foot convention center complex in Ashland. It is imperative that the building we own find or even create advantages that will allow it to stand out and maintain its viability. And I hope that some of the proceeds from this district can go toward that end. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right. Ms. Atkins, resolution 2025-R-24.
Chairman, if you want a committee report.
I was going to do that for her, she read it.
That was our public hearing. That was 8A.
Yeah. Just make sure. Put on the last one.
Okay. Sorry. Ms. Atkins.
2025-R-24, a resolution of council regarding submission of the application for the proposed creation of the City of Huntington Economic Development District to the West Virginia Department of Economic Development or its successor.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lehman and a second from Councilwoman Walling.
Stacy beat me to it.
My apology.
It's fine. I'm just loud.
All right. Good evening again.
Good evening again. Yes, Kathy Burns, Development and Planning. So, this, earlier today, I placed in your mailboxes the slide deck that describes the boundaries. We've narrowed the boundaries down based on feedback from our Cabo County delegation. The boundaries primarily include the ACF vacant, vacant property, beginning at 24th Street. Then they pick up an area right around 20th Street, where we believe there's an opportunity to take some properties and put them back on the tax rolls, to create more economic opportunity, which is the old fire station, and there's a church next door. And then, the boundary extends into the Innovation District, and then extends a little bit into the downtown, picking up the Harris Riverfront Park. And, and that's kind of based on some of the master plan and the opportunity there that we believe that we might be able to create more economic vitality, connecting that Veterans Boulevard, parking garages with the master plan of the park. So, that's all based on, we've had numerous conversations with our Cabo County delegation, and so that packet was placed in your box today. And so, we are here tonight seeking your approval to submit our application to the State Development Office. And it will include the comments from the public hearing tonight as well as the resolution. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Ms. Burns? Anyone from the public?
Thank you.
Committee report, please.
I was just really excited about my committee report, Mike, sorry.
If I missed the other one, I apologize.
Well, that was my committee, too. No, the same, same goes. Economic Development Committee met and voted to forward to council with a favorable recommendation.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the resolution is approved. Item number nine is a resolution, 2025-R-25. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the painting, marking, purchase, and installation of all emergency equipment for two Ford F-250 trucks for the Huntington Fire Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second by Ms. Linda Blau. Good evening, Chief Fuller.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, respected members of council. This is a resolution allows the mayor to enter into an agreement with the sole bidder when it was put out by purchasing Rocky Fork Enterprises in the amount of $36,728 to do all the paintings, markings, purchasing, installation, all the emergency equipment for the two Ford F-250 trucks to make them appropriate response vehicles for us. As you'll recall, these were the trucks that you purchased with the first resolution of the new council, and this will be the completion of that. At that time, we anticipated that the cost may be around $44,000. So, we were pleased to get this bid at $36,728. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chief Fuller? Anyone from the public? Mr. Arthur, committee report.
So, we're. Met and forward to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the resolution is approved. And there's a reason why I put Ms. Holly Smith-Mount down there to coach on the, on the end.
She's out there for some.
Three Musketeers.
Yeah. Item number 10 is a resolution, 2025-R-31. Ms. Atkins.
2025-R-31, a resolution of council approving budget estimate for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Jason Arthur, a second from Holly Smith-Mount. Mayor Farrell. Good evening.
Good evening again. There's obviously a lot of interest in the budget. I'm sincerely happy about that. I want to state this very clearly so everyone understands it. Our animal shelter is a no-kill shelter. And it will remain a no-kill shelter as long as I'm the mayor and on the board of directors. Any suggestion to the contrary is either based on a misunderstanding of the facts or a misrepresentation of them. So, I'll say it again so that everyone is very, very clear. Our animal shelter is a no-kill shelter. It will remain a no-kill shelter as long as I am mayor and on the board of directors. On Thursday, we had our second Animal Control Shelter Board meeting, where I got updated financials that I wanted to share with you. For the first eight months of this fiscal year, their total income is about $930,000, including $107,000 of profit. Now, it's a nonprofit. What I really mean is that revenues exceeded expenses by $107,000. And the savings account is about $180,000. I have those numbers here. Here. Here, I have a statement of their nonprofit that's associated with our animal control shelter. So, for those of you that don't know, we've got this intergovernmental agency here that we fund. And over here, we have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was created to support our animal shelter. Last year, that nonprofit raised $1 million to support the animal shelter, proximal. The year before that, $900,000. Also, on Thursday, we heard a report of the February volunteer hours. 700 hours were spent by volunteers in February, the worst weather month of people coming to our shelter, doing good work. I share this because all of the good that's happened at the animal shelter over the last six years, after the last many years, is because it has a lot of support. It has a lot of support from the city, the two counties, city of Barbersville, volunteers, generous donors. It has a lot of support. And for that reason, it's been pretty successful. That, that support that it got, came from in no small part to the work that this city council has done, the money this city council has given to the shelter. And the budget that you're now considering that was in front of you is the exact same amount for the shelter that this council approved in 2024. To be clear, not all of you were on there, I know that. All right, but Ms. Mount, Ms. Lehman, Mr. Sweeney, if he was here, Mr. Shockley, Ms. Walling, Ms. Rumball, Ms. Johnson, you were here in 2024, and you approved a budget of $200,000, and you voted unanimously for it. Then, you waited throughout the year to see how things were going. And when revenues looked like they were higher and the shelter needed more money, you allocated money last March, 12 months ago, to give them more money because they needed it then. You first budgeted 200, voted unanimously, and then later gave them money when you had it, and you knew that they needed it. Today, I'm proposing to you, in this budget, the exact same thing. We'll start with 200. We'll wait to see how the year progresses. We'll see what our revenue is. We'll see what they need. And then, we'll decide then if they need more. To make it really clear, what I'm proposing to you is the exact same thing that former Mayor Steve Williams proposed to you for the 2024 budget, and you all approved it. If you don't support it today, that same $200,000, I would ask the question, what changed from 2024 to today? We'll hold that thought for a minute about what changed. Because after, you know, speaking to many of you, we had a budget message that I gave you in February. Spent an hour here with PowerPoint slides. I spent three hours with you in this room on a Saturday morning, answering as many questions as I could. We had a public hearing. And I called each one of you, invited you to have a conversation, invited you to come to my office, all of you to come and sit down and talk so that you would be perfectly clear about what I was proposing. And many of you talked to me and told me, like, this is, this is what we think. And from what I understand, some of you may propose amending the budget we have today. Right? And I just want you to know that if we do that, there are trade-offs. Because I think what we agree on, $78 million is fine. It was the same $78 million as last year. And the real difference that I've heard is how we allocate that $78 million. Some of you want a little more here, a little less here. And if we do that, I just want you to know there are trade-offs. Because this, particularly the contingency funds, what I've heard the most about, it's not a slush fund. It's not a piggy bank in a savings account that I'm hoarding money. Like, this is the money that we use as a safety reserve. Right? And that safety reserve gives us the ability to react to unpredictable nature of federal funding that we don't know what's going to happen in Washington, to unusual weather patterns that seem to be increasingly chaotic, causing floods in our city, and unexpected healthcare costs. I'm going to give you just a couple of examples of what the contingency fund might be used for in the future and why I think it's so important to keep the money there in contingencies before we allocate it here today. The first is the A.D. Lewis Center. Many of you know, in Fairfield, we have a center, a community center that's been there for a long time and has served the needs of Fairfield. I'm going to read you the mission off our website about what A.D. Lewis does, or at least one of the goals. And that says, "The goal of the center is to see that all youth in Fairfield community have a chance to succeed in life and become productive citizens through education. To help our youth, the center offers after-school tutoring, incentives for making the honor roll, and education-oriented field trips." The center's a pretty incredible place. It's city-owned, it's run by Ms. Maria Hill. She has a skeleton crew. And I'm going to stand here to tell you that I think it is shamefully underfunded. Shamefully. The money it gets is $200,000 from the city, a little bit more, a few very small grants, right? And they have a really hard time keeping the commodes clean, getting the grass cut, making sure that everything is there that they need to take care of the children of Fairfield. It is funded through the Community Development Block Grant that is a federal source. And that's in question. It may go away. That whole CDBG line, a million and a half, $2 million, may be frozen. If it is, we have a lot of programs, including the A.D. Lewis Center, that relies on that money. When we put money into contingencies, it was with the idea that we don't know what's going to happen in Washington, and we wanted to have money there in case we needed it to fund the many good programs like A.D. Lewis that is funded out of CDBG. There are others. But that's the one that touches my heart the most. Another area that contingency funds are used for is public works for overtime. When there's a road slip, if it snows more than we expected, or the roads get icier than we expected, if it rains more than we expected, and Inslow Park floods again, and we have to send out a cleanup crew to pick up the mud, scrape it off the streets. Overtime funding has to go to public works. We allocate some, but when it's worse than we expect, we pull that down there. If we move money from contingencies and we allocate it now to the animal shelter, like many have suggested that we do, what are we going to do when Inslow Park needs to be cleaned up again? You're going to have to find that money from somewhere. Lastly, as an example, healthcare. For those of you that were in the committee earlier, we moved $500,000 out of contingencies into healthcare. $500,000. Because as we got through this part of the year, we realized that we had underbudgeted and that we needed more money to pay for the insurance. You're going to need to do that again. And our contingency fund by the end of this year, I expect, will be zero. There'll be no money left in there. And when that happens, right, we'll have to find money if we still need more, meaning if we don't have enough in contingencies to cover it, we're going to have to hope that revenue comes in higher expected or take it from somewhere else. That's why contingencies are there, and that's why I want money in there to make sure, as the safety reserve, to give us the ability to react to those unpredictable federal funding actions that may happen to us, to react to the unusual weather that we continue to see more and more, and to make sure that our healthcare costs are all covered. I'll end by saying, back to the original question of what changed? What changed from 2024 when you unanimously voted in favor of a $200,000 budget for the animal shelter? I'll tell you one thing that changed, we had an election. Right? And when I ran, I ran on the idea that the national parts in politics have no place in Huntington. That our sidewalks don't care if you're a Democrat or Republican. We just need to fix the sidewalks. We just need to fix the lights, and we need to put all of that aside. We're all in this together. We're neighbors. We live here, we work here. And what I really want to tell you is that the election is over. We don't need to worry about it for a long time. Right? So, please, put your anger aside for what's going on in Washington, for what might be going on in Charleston, and help me build a city that we can all be proud of. I think we agree on about 99% of this budget. And I urge you to stop feeding it into the political theater. Stop fanning the flames of polarization and do just what you did in 2024 when Steve Williams was the mayor. Right? This budget is financially responsible. It's prudent. It avoids controversial spending and instead focuses on the things that people want most. Less drugs, help for the homeless, fixing the roads and flooding, and growing jobs. It does the thing that only a city can do. Right? You can't raise money and get volunteers to go do these things that the city does. You can through charities and things outside of the city. Our job is to listen to the people. Our job is to listen to the people. Right? I've heard that a lot. Listen to the people. And I want you to listen to people. But please don't give in to the urge to appease the loudest voices. Right? Because I promise you, they won't be here when the unexpected happens. They won't be here when the children of A.D. Lewis need them to fund, to make sure that they, we have the resources to that, those programs stay open. When Inslow Park needs cleaning up again, right, they're not going to be here. Who is going to be here is all of you. Right? You're going to be here, and you're going to have to find the money to pay for it when we have a catastrophe that we have to adjust to. We have a chance to avoid the worst of politics. I urge you to vote yes. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
During the last flooding event in Inslow Park, how much did the city spend on that incident?
I could find out, I don't know. But we obviously, we obviously used a lot of overtime, we put a lot of our heavy equipment out there, but I can find out that answer about exactly how many hours of overtime and how much it cost.
Can you, could you ballpark it?
Could not.
Okay. Where in the budget can we find money allocated to homeless services? Like you just said, that it's what people want to see in it?
Yeah, my Veteran Homeless Pilot Project will be funded out of the contributions line.
Could you tell us a little more about the Veteran Homeless Pilot Project?
We're working on it now, and I'd be happy to, to put together a full presentation for you when it's ready. We've only been at this a couple of months, and we are working with Jan Rader and members of the, uh, uh, community, I'm sorry, the, um, the COC, the Continuum of Care for Homelessness, to put those pieces together. And I'll be excited to share with all of you exactly what we're going to do.
Can we get any kind of a preview or any idea that...
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to try to reach functional zero homelessness for veterans. As you know, in the last pit count, there were about two dozen veterans that were homeless on our streets. And so we're going to work with the VA, and we're going to work with people to get them into housing. Right? That's how you fix homelessness, is you get them into housing, and then you get the wraparound services to keep them in housing. And that'll be the gist of it.
So what will be funded out of the contributions line?
Well, I don't know the exact amount, but again, when we have that, what we'll do is we'll have a contribution request form that'll have all the information and that we, public information that we post in the clerk's office after it's been approved, and that you will see all of these details when we're, when we've got it ready.
You asked what changed, and it was probably a rhetorical question, and I'm sure that it was intended to apply that we, to imply that we agreed with last year's budget because it came to us from Steve. And what has changed is that we did not have to worry whether or not Steve was going to cut checks that got approved. And when he said, "We're going to spend money on this, spend money on that, you know, this cost how much or that cost how much," and we asked him questions, he could answer them. So what you're asking us to do is to approve a budget because of all of the things that you have just said, but you can't tell us what they are or how much they cost.
I can tell you what the budget top line items are, right, in contributions. We know those fixed amounts, just like last year. I sat through the budget hearings and saw the detail that he gave you, and I would say it's a similar level of detail. But I appreciate your thoughts.
All right.
Any other questions for Mayor Farrell this time?
I have a question, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Farrell, I appreciate a lot of what you just said. But actually, to be quite, quite frank, I am very disappointed to hear you say that if the children of our community were impacted, those people wouldn't show up because they would. For you to say that our neighbors wouldn't show up to clean up Inslow if it was flooded, that's, that's a distorted view of our community, because our neighbors did show up to clean up. And I'm sorry to be so emotional, but you were, you were doing great. And then you just went towards that, I don't know, partisan, us versus them? That is not what Huntington is about.
Ms. Rumball, I agree with you. And let me say this about what I said about, about the A.D. Lewis Center. In my view, our community has not shown up. We have not been there for them. You can look at the funding they've received for as long as you want to receive it, and I'm going to tell you, they have not shown up, they have not volunteered, they have not done the work at the A.D. Lewis Center that I believe that we should be doing. And so my point is, is that they deserve it too. And that if we're going to prioritize the money, right? Right? The children are important, and I know you believe the children are important.
Absolutely.
Right? We need to make sure that we have the money for them, which is why I urge you to keep the money in contingencies. So in case that federal money doesn't come to CDBG, that we'll have it there for them. And if, hopefully it all comes through, right? And that we don't need to allocate more money, then we'll have it for other important causes like the animal shelter. I know our community shows up, because I've been there, right? But we, they don't always, we don't have the money. The money is what matters, and that's how we really show our support. And I'm trying to keep money in contingencies to keep us doing the essential services of the city, so that we can make sure that those things that we can't raise money for, that we can't volunteer for, that we actually need money, we have that money to spend it on the things that this city counts on. I'm not trying to draw a partisan dilapidite, I'm doing just the opposite. I want to bring us together. I want to get past the partisan bickering. I want us all to work in a nonpartisan way for the love of the city that I know you have and I know so many other people have.
Can you, I hear what you're saying. Can you promise the people here, the people that are upstairs that are yelling? Can you promise us that up to XYZ of contingency, we'll go towards the animal shelter if we keep it the same? Like, if up to $200,000, you might not want to spend, or we hope to find out that we don't have to spend $200,000 of the contingency fund on the animal shelter, but could you promise us and our residents that you will if it, if push comes to shove?
Yeah, what I'm promising you and the residents and everyone else, I'm a board member of the animal shelter. I'm promising you that it's a no-kill shelter now and will stay a no-kill shelter. I'm promising that I will do everything I can to make sure it has all the resources they need, by working with the counties, by working to help raise money and to make sure that that shelter is just as great as it would be. I'm not going to put a number on it because I can't, because I can't predict the future. I can't do that. What I can do is say that we will absolutely work our tail off to make sure that it's successful.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have another question from Mayor Farrell.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree wholeheartedly with Councilwoman Walling's sentiments that, for me personally, what has changed is trust. We did not have to worry about what Mayor Williams was going to do, what he said he was going to do, he did. And withholding funds to INR, withholding funds from the city mission, doesn't bring trust. So when Councilwoman Rumball is asking, "Can you promise us this?" and you say yes, how are we supposed to believe you if our integrity with voting for unanimously, like you said, to support these things, and you are withholding that funding, how are we supposed to trust you?
Yeah, Ms. Lehman, I'm not withholding funding, funding from INR. I know that it was allocated. Right? What I'm doing right now is making sure that our budget satisfies the essential needs of the city. So as we just said, health insurance. Right? We just put $500,000 from contingencies down to insurance. You're going to need to put another million two, million five, we underbudgeted by $2 million. Before I give money to INR, an outside agency, which is very important, that I want to support, right? I've had a lot of conversations about supporting it, and I want to. But before we give it to an outside agency, we're going to make sure that our people, our families that rely on health insurance have it. And once we do that, once I look at the end-of-the-year budget and I see that we are fiscally sound enough to do those things, I will. Last year, we finished the year by spending more than we had. And so we're going to have an audit adjustment of $1.2 million where our ending fund balance is going to be lower because we outspent our budget. Right? It is fiscally responsible for me to look at what our, our expenses are, look at what our revenues, and make sure the first thing we fund are our people here, the people that we pay, the people that we have insurance, and those essential services like our police department, like our fire department. And then after that, then, we can look at those very important community things, including the library and INR. I expect that we will be able to do that. I'm not withholding funds. I'm waiting to see, as we get in the year, to look at revenues, look at expenses, and then make sure that we can give it to them so we don't go in the hole. I appreciate that you don't trust me. I sincerely do. Right? Everything I've ever said to you, or any of you, I've done. Everything I said when I ran, I've done. Everything I said in my inaugural speech, I'm going to do. Right? Until I give you reasons not to trust me, please, take a leap of faith. Bring this city together and give me a chance. I've been at this for 83 days. All right? We've had a lot that's happened. And I'm doing my very best to communicate to everybody where this city needs to go. What we need to do is we need to work together. We need to work together in a way that puts the partisanship aside. I believe focusing on the most essential things first, and then we can work on everything else in the community together. That's what I want to do with all of you. Right? Including you, Ms. Lehman. You may not trust me, but I'm going to ask you to give it a shot. And I'll trust you, and we'll all trust each other together.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Before I say this, I want to just clarify about the contingency fund, because I appreciate, I can appreciate, as a woman who likes to shop and vacation, that we need a savings account. That is not up for dispute. But I do want to point out that we are actually not, I'm about to make a motion to amend, and I want to make it very clear, I'm not taking out of our contingency fund, I am reducing the amount we are going to put in there for this proposed budget year. So I am not proposing that we take from our current contingency fund, I'm saying we don't move quite as much. So my motion to amend involves the following: moving $444,000 from contingency account 5680103 and moving $200,000 into 5670102, contribution transfers to other entities' animal control shelter; $200,000 into 5670109, contributions to transfers to other entities' economic development; $44,000 into 5670113, contributions and transfers to other entities, and the other entities for micro grants for council. That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion from, on the amendment of, from Holly Smith-Mount, a second from Sarah Walling.
Mr. Chair, if I would, could justify my amendment quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I am reading off of notes, I don't usually do that. I find myself to be better off the cuff, but, as Jason can attest, looking at this, it looks like a serial killer wrote it, so bear with me. We've identified three priorities for this city: public safety, infrastructure, and economic development. And I applaud the mayor for those priorities, I think they're very, very good priorities. This change, excuse me, I chose that very moment to pop a mint in my mouth. We've heard a lot about compassion and love for animals, but I actually want to talk about money. So this change represents 0.57% of our budget. It's not a small amount, I won't, I don't want to downplay especially any amount that has six figures in it, it seems rude to do so, so I don't ever want to be perceived as saying it's only this amount. That's not what I mean, I'm just speaking in relativity. So the $200,000 for the animal shelter, when it comes to public safety and economic development, from a public safety standpoint, I think we belabored the point enough the other night that there is some bites, accidents, rabies costs three grand to treat, who knew? I didn't know that. Diseases, but then there's also the economic development side of healthcare costs, which we're just, we just heard about. Healthcare utilization, insurance costs from accidents. I won't take everyone down the rabbit hole of the ridiculous payer mix that West Virginia has because of our economic status, but that's a big, that's a, that's a conversation for another day. But I did start looking into ROI of things, and a good spay neuter program has a $3 to $5 to $1 ROI. From an economic development standpoint, when I added into the amendment to increase economic development by $200,000, this refers to our community nodes, startup efforts, things like the Hy-Lon CDC, the Fairfield CDC, RenewAll in the West End, Gallagher Village, our libraries, our parks, our food banks, the arts, homeless services, sports tourism, flood mitigation, all of these things have economic development ROIs. Without going too much into it, I did a little bit of digging. Homeless services, of course, we know, and we have heard about the pilot program, which I'm really excited about, that housing a person who is unsheltered saves $30,000 to $50,000 in jail and law enforcement costs, which I think is not an unsubstantial amount. From a community node and incubator startup models, what we see in our community development corporations and things like RenewAll and Unlimited Futures, a community with that kind of support, startups are 87% likely to survive, as opposed to 44% without that kind of support, which is a massive number in economic development. Libraries pay out ROI of $4 to $5 for every one spent. Parks, increased property value, 5 to 20%. And then sports have an ROI, which it said 5 to 1, but I would argue that anyone with a child and travel sports would say that that ROI is way higher, that we're paying way more than 5 to 1 on our children's sports. But parks in general are 3 to 1. And then arts, which of course are also tourism, hotels, food, people coming into our city pay out at $4 to $10 for everyone. Now, of course, we have the support of our amazing CBB here in town and our Chamber of Commerce, so I don't want to say that this is all on us. But I went through, because I'm a, a bit of a mathlete, I took the lowest denominator of ROI for all of those and came out with 3.1, or 3.8. $3.8 for every one spent, which turns that $444,000 into $1.69 million. Granted, that's not promised, right? That's projected money, but that is the lowest, we're Huntington, not Manhattan, right? So I'm not going to say that we're going to get $10 for everyone for certain things. But just to think about the investments and the ROI and the economic development we could experience from that. And then the micro grants, it is, it is a, a smaller thing, but I think that while we have priorities as a city, those translate differently into each of our districts. And therefore, I would like to see that program come back, and I would pledge to the mayor, to finance, to legal, to the rest of council, that I will help to work on an application that meets muster and a process that tightens up our current process so that we can ensure we have oversight and still maintain that nice benefit for our community. I'll stop rambling in one moment, but I think that folks, when they're wanting to move here, we talk a lot about increasing our population, and this will sound trite, and I don't mean it to, but when someone's moving to a community, they don't say, "Man, look at the size of that contingency fund." Right? What they look is outward evidence that we are spending wisely, and I want us to spend wisely, 100%. But I think we have an opportunity here to do a little compromise, move some things around, still maintain a healthy contingency fund, still keep our cash flow going through our unassigned fund balance. And there were a lot of positive things that we've seen over the past year, if you look at our finance statements online, and even the wonderful presentation the mayor gave at the beginning of his budget presentation. I missed it, I had to watch it playback because we had flew. But we've done, we've had a really great year so far, and while there is uncertainty, I think that there is opportunity for us to still bolster some of our efforts. I will quote my mother, hi, Mom, she says, "Money's money." That's her thing. But I think that even in times of uncertainty, it does take money to make money. And so, more than that, we were elected to represent people's voices, and I feel like what they are asking for is reasonable. And I also feel like these, this amendment not only supports the priorities of this city, but also our values as a city. That's it. For now.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add very, very briefly to...
I was going to ask any other questions on the, or comments on the amendment. Ms. Walling.
Thank you. I absolutely support the amendment that Ms. Mount proposed, and I would also, you know, to Mayor Farrell, there are two things in the budget that are absolutely not affected by that. One is the jail bill, which you've said is, is important in our partnership with the county. The other is the contracted services, you know, Mr. Dameron reminded me very, very importantly that we are going to have union contracts coming up for negotiation in this fiscal year, and that those do require the expertise of outside counsel, and I recognize that. And those, those are the things that, to me, like, when there's a justification for it, like a concrete, actual justification for it, I understand those things. And, and again, we've, we've not moved to amend the line item for the jail bill, although, you know, when we talk about having money left over to allocate or reallocate, you know, I would encourage the city and the county to look at ways that we could cut that expense. For example, right now, House Bill 3491 has been introduced. It was unfortunately double-referred to judiciary and then finance, and it's stuck in judiciary right now. But what it does is, should it pass, it would put a cap on the number of days that the city has to pay to house an inmate in the jail, because what I think we're hearing sometimes is that, you know, people are, are in the jail for a really long time, and the county just continues to accrue that bill. So what, what this piece of legislation would do, it would cap that amount, which would mean that the city wouldn't have to pay as much, but also the county wouldn't pay as much. And so, you know, I, I would very much like to see some active, I won't say lobbying, because that's not, that's not right, but, you know, some, some encouragement to our legislators to get this bill out of committee and into the other committee so that it could then cross over by crossover day, because, you know, I've talked with some, some folks from other municipalities, and, and they're absolutely for this. So I think those are the things that we need to be looking at, not just this expense versus that expense, but, but in the grand scheme of things, how can we fix these problems that we have or these expenses that we have? You know? And that's, that's probably it for now. For now.
Chair. I have some comments. So about the amendment, the amendment is more than what I would have proposed, but but I also recognize the importance to it to the community and our neighbors. And ultimately, when we think about this document, this is a proposed revenue budget. It is a document full of words and some numbers, very important numbers, and words matter. And this budget is a document that will be changed, as someone, maybe Scott Arthur, mentioned, four or six times possibly in the next year. As we implement, let's say we expand our legal department and new revenues come in, this document's going to change. New revenues will come in and they will refill that contingency fund or it will go into an unassigned fund balance. So when we look at the revenue lines of this budget, it's interesting that we just, like the unassigned fund balance for 2024 was $10 million, $17,648. And the actual amended budget for '25 was $11 million, $967,954. But our proposed 2026 budget is a flat $9 million. That's because that number is going to move and change as monies come in and expenses go out. I think it's very likely that we're going to bring in more revenue than this very conservative budget predicts. I think that we're going to have the 400-some thousand that's being suggested taken out of contingencies. We're going to get it back, especially once we hire our additional legal teams, once the additional development, the exciting announcements that we hear from Marshall University tomorrow. When those things come through, we're going to have more revenue. I think that, so these words matter because these words can change, and how we present these words to our residents really, really matters. Because how this budget was presented scared the bejesus out of hundreds of people. It scared them so much that they left their homes and their jobs, and they came here, and they sent hundreds of emails and hours of phone calls. Yes, they can rally millions of dollars in support for the animal shelter, and their voice matters. They're part of our community. And I know that everybody has different priorities in their lives. We all have different strengths on what we can focus on, what we can change, what positive impact we can have on one another. Some people make a huge difference by caring for the animals at the animal shelter and donating their time. Some people make incredible difference in the lives of children with their work at the A.D. Lewis Center. And those stories go on and on and on and repeat in all different manners of ways. There's 11 of us up here. All 11 of us have a different strength that we can implement in our neighborhoods, et cetera. We have to recognize that these words matter, and those people up there, they wouldn't be here if the language of this document resonated with them more clearly, that it comforted them enough. And we just have to move a few numbers around to give them that comfort. And then that'll give Mayor Farrell the time to implement these numbers into action. We can trust him to follow this budget that we proposed by tweaking a few numbers around, because if he doesn't, all of those people are going to come back, and they're going to get louder, and it's not going to get, they're not going to give up. It's going to get worse. We need this moment, this fracture in our community to be healed. I suggested to someone that I was hoping that Farrell would use this moment, sir, to heal this fracture like a break in a bone, and that it would come back. As a community, we could come back stronger. Because whatever is coming down the line from federal malarkey that we hear, we have to be in this together to fight against it. And if we're divided now, it's just going to make whatever's coming so much worse. So I'm 100% going to vote yes on the amendment that Holly proposed.
Any other comments on the amendment? Anyone from the public, Mr. Limley, on the amendment?
Give me one moment. We'll see if anybody upstairs would wish to comment on the amendment.
I want to ask Holly, you said a mouthful, a whole lot. Is it really clear to the public the difference between what you're amending and what is already? What is the difference between the two?
Sure.
I mean, not, what's the difference? If we take the money out of the fund, then you want, what is the difference? We said a whole lot, but people need to know exactly, specifically, what they're voting for and what we're voting.
Right. I appreciate that. So I'm not suggesting we take any money out of anywhere. I'm suggesting that we don't move with this budget proposal as much to contingency. Our contingency fund will still be just shy of $4 million, whereas right now it's at about a little over 2. It's in your budget line item under the contingency tab. I can find it on a little, because of course, everyone's watching. Here it is. So our fiscal year '24 actual contingency fund was $2.097 million. Our FY '25 amended budget contingency was $2.41 million. The proposed budget for this year is to bring it up to $3.97 million, whereas I'm suggesting we take it to $3.4 million. So we would still end up with $3.4 some million left. So the change between last fiscal year and this proposed budget is $1.564 million. So I'm suggesting $1.102 million. So I'm not taking money from contingency. I'm just saying that this year we don't give as much. Hi, Kathy.
Hi, Kathy Burke Sullivan, Finance Director. Holly, I would like to say I truly appreciate everything you said, and you also. I would like to say that on the contingency, we found out that we have to reduce our contingency by $1.2 million in the current fiscal year.
Can you get your mic a little closer, because when that kicked on it...
Is that better?
Yes, because when the fan kicked on it, it cut you in half.
Okay. So we have to reduce our contingency by $1.2 million because we just spoke with our auditors. Our audit is complete, and we were notified that we need to reduce it by $1.2. The contingency in your budget is a best guess estimate. So if you take that $1.2 and you take it to the contingency that's in the fiscal year '26 budget, subtract it out. So then you'll take the $500,000 that we're proposing to move for healthcare, subtract that out. And then the $1 million to $1.5 million that we will absolutely need, we're on track for, for healthcare. Then you get your real contingency number. Now, what happens after that, it's up to finance, it's up to the mayor, it's up to legal, it's up to all of us to try and build that contingency back. Because that contingency is what saved us during COVID. We built it up, we had reserve, and enough to get us through till federal fundings came down. And your unassigned fund balance and all of those things that build and kind of, the unassigned fund balance is on the revenue side, the contingency is on the expenditure side. We also have grants and all of that, and if the grants are impacted, we're in a lot of trouble. And so I'm asking you, please don't make changes. Let's get through. Let's see how we're going to do throughout the end of the year. I mean, Mayor Farrell will be coming back to you. I'll be coming back to you. Scott Arthur will be coming back to you and kind of letting you know exactly where we are. But this budget is very important, and if you start moving contingency around when we really need it for healthcare, we won't have anything. And then we'll have to find some other way to cut it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Ms. Burke's a question? Ms. Sullivan, sorry. I'll get used to it sometime.
Burke's is okay.
Okay. You're probably like me. I answered anything. My question is this, so just by not allocating that, well, okay, by changing the allocation for the contingency fund, if we move, you know, as Ms. Mount suggested, $200,000 back into the line item for economic development contributions, those don't have to be paid until we're in a position to pay them, correct?
That is true, but what we're reporting to the state, I do my best to make sure it's accurate as possible.
Sure.
Because we're held to that standard. And then if we're moving funding and we're not even really sure if we're going to spend it, you know, that's not being as accurate as possible.
And I can appreciate that, but when we're talking about $200,000, are we really more certain that we'll spend it out of the contingency fund than we are out of the economic development contributions line item?
So spend it out of the contingency line?
I guess there are objections, all estimates.
The best guesses.
Correct. And so I maybe, I guess easiest way to say it, because I'm not a numbers person, but our best guess may be different than yours. Your expertise and mine are, you're here and I'm here, so don't think that I'm, but, you know.
So I do understand what you're saying, and this budget is not just, it's not conservative in the matter of revenue. It is as accurate as we could possibly make it by reviewing the trends, looking at the knowns, the unknowns, and the whole finance team works very diligently on this to try and get it right. And if we are going above and beyond, then at the end of the fiscal year, you'll see that we were able to bring in more revenue than we anticipated. And a lot of that is from past due balances, FISO to the city. But we do our best to do that. But we do see a trend on healthcare. Last year, you can look at it, and this year, I have just recently, just this past week, I reviewed it all again to kind of see where we are, because I wanted to know how much we should put on that budget revision. And of course, that can change, but we have high cost claimants, and it hasn't changed yet. It could be higher. So if you take $1.2 million out of what is in contingency today and you subtract that out for the adjustment, and then you subtract the $500,000 out, and then the $1.5 out, and then that's my best guess that we'll need, you're right around between $700,000 and $800,000 that we're looking to end the year. And then if we are fortunate enough to bring in more revenue than expenses, well, yes, that's going to increase your contingency, and that's always my goal. I always want to be able to increase it because I want to support us. But let's say something else happens, some emergency happens. I want to be able to say that we planned enough to be able to support that and carry that. So if you move it from contingency anywhere, yes, it's going to make an impact. And I hope that by the end of the year, we've turned it around. Any other questions? Thank you.
If not, I wanted to go last. So for everyone that's been paying attention for the last eight, nine years, my very first day on city council was the day that this budget was a mess. And Mayor Williams had laid off police, fire, and civilian jobs. At the time, we had a different finance director other than Ms. Kathy Sullivan. Over that time, and some of you all have been with us on this ride, she has turned it around. I've met with her. I've had some finance meetings and things over the years. I truly appreciate where you're at, and I think your point is very valid. But I trust the person that is the head of our finance department as well. If it's going to cause a shakeup in how things are done and put us at risk, I might have to side with the CPA.
Of course you would. My only comment on this for any further is that we have been preached at that this is a flat budget this entire time. And so what is the difference of $200,000 into the jail bill line or legal fees, which we can appreciate, we've established that they're necessary for that, but a jail bill is a projection way more than anything else. We don't know that we need that. So I guess my confusion is, is if this is a flat budget and $200,000 makes such a big difference coming out of contingency, then why did we need to move it anything into the jail bill fund, which is absolutely a production of use? That's my only point. I would also say that our actual expenses since 2019, which is as far back as the slides went, have been way below revenues consistently for years. Certainly can appreciate the financial uncertainty we're looking at from a federal level. My motion is to bring it out of contingency. If that doesn't work, maybe someone else has a better idea, but the people have spoken as to what they want.
Hang on just a second, sir. Is there any other questions on the motion or comments? Mr. Limley?
Mr. Chairman, we have two individuals from upstairs that would wish to speak on the amendment.
When they come down, just... You can't, sir. Let me clarify. What we're speaking to is the amendment that Councilwoman Holly Smith-Mount made, not the budget itself, just the amendment that she proposed of the 440,000?
444.
444.
We need to support our nonprofits now, and when the amendments happen and the money in the contingency can come back, that's what we keep hearing. This is a baseline. There's reassurance that we can build the contingency fund or the money will come back to our government. So just the nonprofits can wait, and we'll put it in our savings account. But why can't you just take that same reassurance and build up your contingency fund over time? I think you suggested that before, instead of just taking it all from our baseline budget. Like for a low-class person like myself, I can't just put money into my savings account before my bills are paid or put money in my savings account before my groceries are bought or my medication is bought. Like, let's just be real. The mayor taking complete control over all the money in the city and then dodging financial obligations for programs that house our people and feed our poor, withhold vital monies from organizations that quite literally keep our unsheltered neighbors alive, and then shrug your shoulders when it is pointed out by a city council member for all of us to see. Pulling funding that was already voted and approved. Where is that money, and why don't you care about our neighbors? I want a community that is helpful and kind and honest, and I want that from my government as well. I want a community that works together for the greater good. I want a community that actively listens to each and every single person and works together to meet the needs as a whole. I see examples of this constantly because I surround myself with those people in my neighborhood and in my city. But then there are situations like this, and I think it would be intellectually dishonest for me to not just call this cruel. If you said at the beginning of this that at the end, you projected our contingency will be zero. Of course, if you only take and take and take and never give back to that contingency, it will be zero. But why can't we just take from it now, support the least of these, and then build it back with the money that's going to come in that you keep promising us? Thank you.
I just heard our finance person say that after all of the things that we need our contingency budget for, there's still about 800 grand left, something like that. And there's a request for 444 of it to be moved to things that we've already said that we wanted a whole bunch of times and things that would help us trust you, mayor. This is an easy yes, absolutely easy yes. It's easy to understand. We know what's going on. What this means is that we can take some money that we don't know what we would be doing with and just promises, promises, and we can put it into things that we know we want, that people have been showing up last week and today saying that we want. I can hear them cheer from here. This is what the people want. And there were a few business owners that said that they wanted some more cops around, but there's hundreds of people showing up saying that they want the homeless shelters funded, they want the animal shelters funded, they want economic development funded. And these are all things that this amendment would give, and we have the money for it. It's there. She just said that there's enough there to cover it, but maybe not for some stuff that we don't know whether or not it's going to happen. And we cannot get any more promises from this mayor because he's already cut stuff that we already said that we wanted and that has already been approved by this board. This is an absolute yes amendment. It has to be. It absolutely has to be. There's plenty of money. It's the obvious right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was all the individuals upstairs that wanted to speak.
Is there anyone in the public? Is there anyone in the public in the room down here that want to speak to the amendment?
Yes, I want to speak to the amendment.
Yes, sir.
My name is Douglas. I'm a retired ironworker. I've been here since 1985, and I am a product of A.D. Lewis. When I first came down here, Brother Tom Hill was the one that was actually the director of that, and he gave me a job there. I started out mopping floors. I ended up going to school so I could do the pool chemicals, so we could have a swimming pool, because at that time, back in 85, 86, there was no swimming pool in A.D. Lewis. We rebuilt that whole thing. I've been in construction for better part of 40 years of my life. From there, I went to Marshall University. I worked as a janitor there, got some education, ended up going to the trade school. All of this comes down to this, because now I'm retired, I'm in the process of opening up my own business, and that started from A.D. Lewis. Now, I'm listening to everybody talk about finances, but the budget is already here. The mayor is brand new. You can't go back and say that he was the cause of this, and he was the cause of that. This is his first budget, and you want to tinker with it from the beginning. You've already said there's going to be certain changes that's going to happen throughout the course of the year. Why can't you just go ahead and pass this vote, I mean, pass this budget, reject this amendment, pass the budget, and then if it needs to be changed and amended, get it done? But don't start from the very beginning, give him an opportunity. He's fresh in office. It seems to me that you're so busy, you're so busy wanting to put your hands in things, you want to talk about getting together and doing this and that and the other, but you won't even give the man a chance. I say, reject this, because we already heard from our last meeting, from the legal, it's going to take time. It's going to take time. All right, you go argue about this and argue about that, but you have to submit it to Charleston inside X amount of time, correct? And then, you go argue about this, then you argue about that. And all that does is put us farther and farther behind. We're on a good foot here. There was an election, everybody made their opinions known, we put people in office to get stuff done. Why are you going to argue about the little things until you give an opportunity to make, let the man make his point? If he messes up, we're corrected. But at least give him a chance to do that. Why are you arguing over, you're not going to pay attention to me now? Well, I sit and listen to you talk about all of that.
Everybody gets three minutes, Mr. Franklin, that was your three minutes, sir.
I apologize, but give the man a chance to do his budget.
Anyone else want to speak to the amendment? When I say the amendment, to kind of stay focused on the amendment.
The mayor has promised a lot, he's asked a lot of trust, and it's hard for me to trust a mayor who has been deceitful about the budgeting so far. He has preached and preached and preached of ARPA. This is a flat budget. We have the same amount of money as last year and this year. There was no one-time payment to the animal shelter that is no longer available. The same money is there, yet I have heard him and seen him continue to push the narrative that the funding is not there. It was a COVID payment. That's not true. So this has been broken down, he himself claimed, last meeting, he agreed, flat budget, same amount of money. So I don't know why him and other members of the council are pushing the narrative that the money is gone. It is there, flat budget. I don't trust him. And he said, take a leap of faith, because he has not given us a reason to not trust him. He has. He's lying, he has been lying. I don't trust him, and I won't until he gives me a reason to. I don't give trust, trust is earned. And I want, this budget needs to serve the community. I will give him a chance, I have given him a chance, with his proposed budget. I read through it, I gave it a chance. It didn't serve my ideals, it didn't serve the community. And I think it's unfair to say that we are not giving him a chance when this proposal was his chance. This amendment is his correction. This is not, this is not a monarchy, this is not a dictatorship. The mayor does not have the complete say in everything for this city. The council should put their hands in and tinker with it, because that is your job. That is what you were elected to do. Thank you.
Mr. Shockley, if I could?
Yes, sir.
This council on September 23rd, 2024, passed a resolution to move money from ARPA, right, for the animal shelter. I know you all were here that voted for it, and know that that happened, you can go back and check the record, on that day, it's video recorded, it's a resolution, it's public record, it absolutely did happen.
Revenue replacement fund.
Excuse me.
I have a question about that, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Was that the money that former Councilwoman Bailey wanted to move out of ARPA, because, or was that the second $200,000 payment? What was the amount that was moved from ARPA on that date in that resolution?
$200,000.
That was ARPA interest.
Oh, okay, it was ARPA interest? Oh, that's right, I remember that, because it was the same night that we moved 500 from ARPA interest to the city mission, so it did not come from ARPA payment, it was interest that was earned, because we put the ARPA money in an interest-bearing account.
And that's not part of the contribution. The contribution is 400,000, it was an additional 200,000 in ARPA interest, which I can understand is confusing, and then an additional amount from Councilman Bailey at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
I will be brief. You may have heard Yogi Berra's famous saying, "This is deja vu all over again." I have stood not before you guys, but toward a very similar elected body. They were told a story by their leader that there was a financial crisis, and that he and they needed to grab every single dime they could find, even if they had to pry it off the carpet, because without it, this other public body would fail. That elected body chose to believe their leader. And I think we all know how that turned out. This community went through 18 months of hell, because the former school board superintendent decided he wanted to keep less than $2 million from the school excess levy that would have gone to our parks and libraries. I don't want to see you guys make the same mistake, but you're doing it. Some of you, Ms. Rumball, Ms. Walling, Ms. Mount, have tried to inject a little bit of sanity into a process that shouldn't be this confrontational. With that, I agree with Mayor Farrell, there is a lot of confrontation, and there's a lot of partisanship. And that is being fed in this instance by the way the mayor has handled everything. This is his budget, he makes the decisions, he decides which nonprofits win and which nonprofits lose. That's not his job. That's your job. Read the charter, the council controls the purse strings. I think if we want to go back to having really boring council meetings that are over and a half an hour or less, because everybody's on the same page, pass this amendment. If you guys want to go down the same road that the Campbell County Board of Education went down for more than a year, don't pass the amendment, pass the budget as the mayor wants it, and I can confidently predict that that's what you're going to get. I don't want that, nobody wants that, so please, pass the amendment, it's little enough, the city will survive. Thank you.
And I'm the president of One by One Animal Advocates. I have dedicated 20 years of my life to rescue, with the last 14 years primarily serving the Huntington-Cabelline Animal Shelter. I have experienced the absolute worst in some of the shelters I've been in, which makes me really appreciate where our shelter is today. I wasn't sure where I was supposed to speak, but since I'm for the amendment, that's why I hopped up here now. So I wanted to say, we have come so far, we're at the tipping point, we've put in our 10,000 hours. I can tell you that you'll find many of us down there on a Saturday morning at 5:00 in the morning, you'll find us cleaning cages, taking pictures, arranging bedding, finding fosters. We are doing everything we can to save lives. We will keep working to fundraise, as people have suggested. I assure you, we do it every day. We fundraise and fundraise, we will secure grants, and we'll continue to recruit volunteers, but we need your help. And that is why I'm asking you to support or vote for the amendment to help the shelter. And I'm glad to hear the mayor state that as a member of the animal control board, he will do whatever it takes in the future to help us remain no-kill. We truly need your partnership. I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak both Thursday and again tonight, and I really want to thank those of you who took the time to search for financials and to come and tour the shelter, so you could see what it is we are so passionate We look forward to having a positive and committed relationship with all of you, our elected officials, the mayor, in the future, and we want to give you a shelter that if you ever need it, if your animal ever needs to come there, you will feel happy dropping it off. Thank you for your time.
Courtney Cross, the director of the Huntington-Cabelline Animal Shelter. I want to thank Rob Archer and Linda Blough for coming to the shelter and spending a couple of hours with me today, looking around and seeing what it was all about. There's a lot going on at the shelter all the time, there's a lot to balance, hundreds of animals, employees, volunteers, adopters, rescues, animal control, veterinary care, vehicles to keep running, phones to answer, bills to pay, food to buy, all of those things, transports to coordinate, it's a lot. Okay, I'm committed to helping the animals and their people in our community. It's expensive to run a top-notch shelter. We've made many changes and improvements over the past few years, but there's much more to be done. The shelter building opened in 1979, and it's not cool or interesting, it's really kind of icky, but we keep trying to make it better, but we have a long way to go. Now, the Cook School is cool, and is kind of a little shining star in our shelter system. Mr. Archer said it well today, I know people are always like, what's the difference between Wavara or the Alliance and the shelter? And he said, a good school analogy, it's like if you have a sports team at school and you have a booster club, okay? Wavara or the Alliance is the booster club for the shelter. And so all of the money that is raised for Wavara benefits the shelter, there's no separation there. I'm smart enough to know that we need the support of our city, our city government, our council, our mayor, to keep moving forward, and I'm going to do my part to ensure that that happens. If you've not visited yet, please touch base with me, we'll make a plan, and I'd love to spend some time showing you around. We need to keep moving forward, there's still a lot of work to be done, there are many lives yet to save. I will remain hopeful that the mayor's pledge of support for the shelter is sincere, and I want to thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I make a brief comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I kind of debated on whether to speak or not, but this is so important, and I know a lot of us haven't been working together very long, we have new members on council. I've had the privilege of working with a lot of you for the last two years, and I wholeheartedly trust Holly and Sarah, and, you know, having conversations with finance. We are elected by the people, and we have a lot of people here speaking, and I think having an open mind and giving a little to get a little, especially with that trust, gains a lot. And I really think thanking people for coming to speak and for being here today, thanking people for setting up the auditorium so people can be here today, is wonderful, because that's what democracy is, is listening to the people, and that's what we're here to do. And I really think with an open mind, that this is what we should do, is listen to folks. Everything else, I think, will fall into place after that. I'm not a numbers person, I'm dyslexic, you know what I mean? Like, I'm more of an advocate of a community, and I think here today, we need to be community leaders. And I think that, you know, listening to Ms. Mount, who is a numbers person, who I greatly trust, I think that the right thing to do is to pass the amendment, and that's why I will be voting yes.
Okay, on the amendment, all those in favor signify.
Chairman, I would like to call for a roll.
I'm going to, if it's close.
I'm requesting one, you're compelled to.
I would second her motion for a roll.
I was going to do a voice vote, and then call the roll.
I am making a request of you to do a roll call vote, as well within the rules.
Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
And this is for the amendment?
For the amendment.
Just the amendment.
Just the amendment only.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumball?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney, absent. Ms. Walling?
Yes.
Mr. Archer?
No.
Mr. Arthur?
No.
Ms. Blough?
No.
Ms. Holly?
No.
And Mr. Shockley?
And the amendment has failed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a point, that that fully deflates the partisan comments that were made earlier, because that was not a party-line vote. And I also will say that I'm a little offended by the insinuation of partisanship, when honestly, I would never have even considered an amendment if hundreds and thousands of people hadn't shown up here, hundreds, 2,000, not hundreds of thousands, hadn't shown up here, and that was absolutely not a partisan issue at all. It's offensive to call it such.
Now, any comments on the budget, unamended, from council?
Well, yes, Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So I recognize that we do not have a consensus on council right now to listen to the voice of the people who show up here and speak their minds. And that is unfortunate. I wholeheartedly believe that we represent our neighbors. We're just here at the moment as placeholders before someone else comes up and takes this role. And by not passing that amendment, we have just broken the hearts and the spirit of hundreds of our neighbors. All we had to do was change a little bit of numbers around, pass the budget, and then a few people, Kathy and the mayor mostly, would have had to figure out how to make the finances work, and it would have worked. Instead, we chose two people and our allegiance to them, instead of the people who voted for us to represent them. Now, I do agree, the mayor is new, and I think that Kathy's budget, the mayor's budget, was very sensible. I would not have suggested a $444,000 amendment, maybe a contingencies amendment, but barring that, I do recognize that the mayor still needs time to figure stuff out. He needs to follow through with the promises that he has made. And so I'm going to vote yes on this budget. I don't have any additional amendments to suggest, because I'm not going to throw out the baby with the bathwater. I hope that the mayor will use the contingencies fund and the new revenues that come through to make every agency that has been negatively impacted, be it the animal shelter, the city mission, the park... mission, the parks and libraries, as whole as quickly as possible. And if that means requesting a new contingency draw to pay INR in the next two weeks, I'm all for it. And that's what I would ask the mayor to do. Ask us to pull from contingencies, to make whole the libraries, the city mission, from the opioid settlement fund, and whatever else hasn't been paid that needs to be paid. Give the people some comfort, because we as a body, if we pass this budget since we didn't pass that amendment, have stripped the comfort and the unity and community that we once had. As America's best community, we just crapped all over hundreds of people upstairs.
Scott, if it's okay, for the people that are down here, got here early, I will start with them before we start with the ones upstairs. So if there's anyone in here that wants to speak to the budget, I will take public comment on the budget.
Yes, sir. If the clerk could name the first five people from upstairs so they can be kind of on standby, I would appreciate that while we go through the people here, if that's okay with the chair.
That'd be fine.
Thank you, sir.
I was told right before we started there, about 30 on the list that signed up to speak.
Total, how many?
Total, I'm not sure, ma'am.
I can only tell you.
My name was called out, and I'm already here. You want me to just, like, roll up?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Barbersville, West Virginia. However, as I said last time, if anyone passes this budget, I am letting every unhoused person move to your district where I'm going to move, and we're all going to vote against you. Now, I want to make sure the animal shelter knows that I also stand with them. So between the hours of 8:00 PM and 10:00 PM, I will be going around gathering every stray animal I find and depositing it in your yard. You will walk out every morning with 60 new pet cats and wondering where they came from. Your idea for the budget. Now, these are not threats, not with a cop sitting right here. They're mission statements. I will do these things. Having said that, I think it says a lot about a person when they bully the most vulnerable in their society and then run out of the room with their tail tucked between their legs. That says a lot about them. And I'll also say, I'm so proud of my citizens that came up to look that bully in the face and say, bet you won't. We started with a prayer, we're going to end mine with a Bible verse. Matthew 25:40, "What you do to the least of my brethren, you also do for me." God help you.
Amanda Beach Burge. I am Chair for the Cabalgany Democratic Executive Committee. And I didn't write anything beforehand, because I wanted to see how tonight was going to go. I had worked a lot on Parks and Libraries, and this is exactly the same scenario. But one of the members from Parks and Libraries decided to put faith into Mayor Farrell. And what's happening with the homeless population right now is kind of evident that that fell through for them. So I hope, if you're getting promised something in Fairfield, it's in writing. I mean it. And, you know, I am not your grandmother's chair. I'm not up here to sit and hold up Democrats who won't vote with Democrats. I'm not. And I, as a matter of fact, Mr. Farrell said, I would not be here to fight for children in Fairfield. I guarantee you, I would pay for the ad and get as many people as I got here right now today for them. And I mean that. And if you want me to do that, I will do that. Just have to ask. But I think it's unfortunate that we are going to go down this path of a divided community and let this continue to happen because of ego. This is a man's ego, probably a couple men's egos. And this is where we are. But I promise you, this will not stop, and you're going to get a people here every night, and you're going to be here till 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, every meeting, for a long time. So if you want to continue to do this, let's do this. Thank you.
In the middle of Huntington, West Virginia, and I'm not going to get through this, there's a river. Next to this river, there's a steel mill. Next to the steel mill, there's a school. In the middle of the school, there's a fountain. Each year, on the exact same day, at the exact same hour, the water to this fountain is turned off, and at that moment, once a year, throughout the town, time stands still. If you lived in Huntington for more than a couple of days, you probably know where that came from. That day, that week, that month, that year, and ever since, this community has come together to provide support to our neighbors in their most vulnerable hour. Those who are hurting, those who need help, this is not about Marshall, it's not about football, it's about this community. The strength of this community and the growth that we have shared is part of our DNA now. We are Courtney Proctor Cross and Heather Olick and the Huntington Cabalway Animal Shelter. We are Mitch Webb and the hundreds of volunteers and staff at the Huntington City Mission. We are a community that supports Harmony House, our libraries, our museums, and our parks. We are, above all, a community that cares for our neighbors. We are a community that comes together when times are hard. We don't come for a day. We come for the long haul, come hell or high water, which I can also tell you about. I know many of you, some days we agree, and frankly, probably most days, we don't. Some of us are Democrats, some Republicans, some Mountain Party, and some are just tired of all the rest of us. Some are Christians, some Jewish, some Hindu, some Muslim. But I think there's one thing we might agree on, and that is, we love this community. This crazy mix of people that we call Huntington, our neighbors, our next-door neighbors, our neighbors in need, our neighbors who are struggling, addicted, and unhoused, and our four-legged neighbors, too. We are all different, but we share this wonderful space. Please do not let our differences separate us. To paraphrase someone for whom I have a lot of respect, regardless of what your higher power may look like, may it grant to each of us the strength and courage to honor the dignity of every human being, speak the truth in love, and walk humbly with one another and our God for the good of the people of this community. Thank you.
Hope everybody enjoyed a few-minute break. I know most of us up here did.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget, to move $200,000 from 5670109 contributions to 5670102, the animal shelter. This falls under contributions. The animal shelter is a subset of the contributions line item. So what we're saying is, we're going to take money that would already be eligible for contributions, economic contributions, and dedicate it directly to the animal shelter, simply moving 200 from that line item and pledging it to the animal shelter, so that we can put this puppy to bed.
Second?
Second, yeah.
I have a motion and a second on an amendment to the budget. Discussion for members of council.
I would agree with what Ms. Mount is proposing. These are contributions that are going to be allocated. We, with so many people here speaking, there has to be a middle ground for everyone. We have so many folks that are here yet to speak, and as their shirts say, we need to be their voice.
Anyone else on the amendment?
Chair, I think I spoke with Kathy Burke Sullivan a little bit earlier about the contributions. And so there's approximately $800,000 in the contributions fund, which hasn't been necessarily assigned anywhere. So by editing, by voting yes on this amendment, we're just saying, hey, this will be for the animal shelter. So it's not really moving anything, it's just saying, this is going to go there.
We're carving $200,000 out of the contribution line item to specifically go to the animal shelter.
Okay. I think that's a fantastic idea. We're not taking from contingencies whatsoever. It would be totally, totally full. Basically, the budget is exactly how the mayor wants it. We're just asking the contributions form to, contributions fund, sorry, to go specifically to assist the animal shelter, which would comfort the hearts of so many of our residents and the hundreds of people who have come out and spoken, advocated over the last two sessions. If, if ever there was a time to vote for or compromise to heal our community after this horrific fracture that's happening, this would be the moment. And it's, and ultimately, if the math doesn't work out in a couple of months, we'll figure it out then.
Mr. Chair, is Mayor Farrell in here? I have a question for him. Okay, sorry, I didn't see you back there. Would that be agreeable to you?
Mr. Mayor Farrell, can you come to the podium, please?
I'll leave it to all of you. I presented a budget, and I'd ask you guys to pass the budget as is.
Mayor, hold on. A little levity.
Yeah.
One less form to approve, though, right?
It is one. It would be one less form. No, I would say it actually would, maybe. Maybe one less form. Yes.
See, right? Don't put all those cards out there.
Any other questions on the amendment or comments? Ms. Atkins, please call the roll on our second amendment. Not the second amendment, right, but the second amendment of the budget. When I said, I was like, I need to clarify that, because it came out wrong.
And will you clarify that for me?
Chair, public comment?
I'm sorry.
All right.
We've been at this for a minute. Anyone from the public on the second amendment that Ms. Holly Smith Mount proposed? I have three minutes, sir.
Josh Keck, 2903, Staunton Road. Good evening, council, or should I say, good evening, contestants. You see, after Thursday night's meeting, I picked up a new nickname, the Puparoni Professor. And I thought, man, that would be a cool name for a game show. So welcome, everybody, to tonight's game show called Throw Us a Bone. Audience participation is encouraged. If you'll direct your attention to my assistants here on three, two, one, Throw Us a Bone! Now, contestants, each of you has been given a bone. If you wish to play the game, please keep the bone on your desk. If you don't wish to play, you can place it on your lap. We don't want to break council rules. Now, here's how the game works. We're going to present three scenarios where you could increase funding to the animal shelter tonight. One of them is already on the table, that is the amendment. At the end, we will ask you all together to throw us a bone if you support any of those options, and if you don't, just leave your bone on the table. Now, this is a team game. You're playing against the house. If all bones are thrown, the house wins. If any bones remain, you win. Now, it wouldn't be a game show without a grand prize, so please welcome our grand We've got to have some fun. Contestants, they don't call me Professor Puparoni for nothing. Before you is 39 pounds of my special Puparoni. This Puparoni is worth $2 million a pound, or the equivalent of $78 million, which is your entire budget. Now, if the house wins and all bones are thrown, I take that Puparoni to the animal shelter tomorrow. But if you win, you get to keep it. Now, let's get into the scenarios. The first one is that we restore funding to the animal shelter to the full $400,000, which would happen if you pass this amendment. Now, this in my hand is $400,000 of Puparoni from that budget. Now, on your proposed budget, you've got only $200,000. We would like to see this restored in full, which this amendment would do. So that would be fantastic. Now, if there are not the votes tonight to make that happen, we are going to present you two options, two different scenarios, that are a compromise. We don't want these, this is not what we're here for, but we understand that compromises sometimes have to be made. So here to present scenario two and three is my co-host, Lenny Sundahl. Sundahl Stewart. Good evening, contestants. Scenario two, second scenario, is that you increase funding of the shelter to $300,000. Why $300? Because the mayor asked you to fund the animal shelter at the same level as fiscal year 2024, and in fiscal 2024, you originally gave the shelter $200,000, but then you passed a budget revision of $100,000, contributed a total of $300,000. So allocating $300,000 to the shelter just keeps everyone honest.
Ms. Lynn, Mr. Lenny.
Motion to waive the rules. He should get to speak for an additional three minutes.
I was second, yeah, I was behind Josh.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
Now, if that's still too much, the final scenario is to fund the shelter at $250,000. Why $250? Because that at least accounts for inflation. City first funded the animal shelter at $200,000 in fiscal year 2021. So it's been five years, and there's been a lot of inflation since then. Just ask the person who makes your omelets. In fiscal year 2021, city had revenue before grants of $54 million. Fiscal year 2026, budget proposes $64 million in revenue before grants. So you have $10 million more available. So let's take $50,000 of that and give that to the animal shelter. Either of these compromises does two things for you. One, covers inflation. Two, gives the mayor some ammunition to go to the county commission and say, hey, council, city is stepping up, wants to increase the allotment, and I need y'all to get there with me. Now, contestants, get your bones ready. If any of these scenarios sound like reasonable steps, you can take tonight. On my count, I need you to, audience, one, two, three.
Throw us a bone!
You need a helmet.
Sounds great.
Well, it looks like we have some bones left on the table. Well played, well played, everybody. You have defended your desk, and the Puparoni will stay right here, but remember, it's great Puparoni, it's great responsibility.
That was incredible.
While they're changing sets, I would like to say I have a 125-pound dog, so I'm keeping my bone and rock.
Throw my disabled, please don't give them.
I'm a cat guy. I love dogs, too.
Let's go on to the show.
I took a look at the Huntington Board Members Meet the Council Members page, and five of you, five out of 11, specifically mentioned that your favorite part about living in Huntington is the willingness to help your neighbors. Now, these five people were Tia Rumball, I'm sorry, I don't, anyways, Teresa Johnson, Linda Blough, Stacy Jo Holly, and Rob Archer. We are all here begging you to help your neighbors. I have been here for over 10 hours in these past two sessions, begging you to help your I am 19 years old. I have stuff I could be doing. I am not here because this is fun. Do you know how bad this has to be to get a bunch of teenagers in a city council budget This isn't the Friday night hangout. You all came to the shelter, some of you, some of you showed up. You know that this money is needed. Without this money, the shelter operates on a deficit. After the last meeting, after I left, I listened to your discussion. I went to Wendy's, I got a Thin Mint Frosty, and I sat in the Sheetz parking lot. I saw multiple stray dogs in those few hours. Of course, I tried to catch them, because that's what I do. I didn't. They're terrified, they're starving, they're scared, they're not going to trust me, because they don't know me. The shelter is the only place these animals can go. The shelter is the only place these people can go. Both the animal shelter and the city mission need funding. I am asking you to keep Huntington an amazing place to live and help your neighbors, hold up to your promises. You put it yourself, I read it, I actually have all of them screenshotted on my phone. I stayed up late doing this, because I work at the animal shelter, I work every single day, and I want you to know. I work every single day, and I want you to know that I have spent a lot of time researching all of you, what you find important, to get you to realize that this budget does not help your neighbors, whether it is the cut to the Facing Hunger Food Bank. 20% of children in Cabo County experience food insecurity, meaning they do not have sufficient access to nutritious food. Children will go hungry. I know that's important to you, Ms. Johnson.
Hi, members of council. My name is Brianna Bowen. I'm the executive director of the Cabo County Public Library. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I wanted to just, I don't know how this goes when when we talk about the amendments, and I don't know if you all...
To speak to the $200,000 that she's wanting to move from line to line.
I am, I am. But I don't know if I ask something, if you all have the opportunity to respond to me. I'm concerned, I want the animal shelter paid for, but I am concerned because of the amendment. I guess I have questions because of where contributions in the current budget was already cut, and I don't want nonprofits fighting over money, and I hope that we are become way more wealthy than taking money and that I'm taken care of, but I don't remember what it was shaved down to, but it was already a lot removed from the contributions line item. And now, to take it down, I'm just curious what that will do for people like me with the library. I can only speak to the library, and if the money that the city contributed to us typically came from that line item, you know, I'm curious, as are some other people up in the room that represent the other nonprofits that ask for contributions, but I wholeheartedly want everyone funded and the animal shelter funded, but I would not be doing my job if I did not ask for clarification. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I say something before? Are we allowed to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Like our mayor said, this budget concerning the animal shelter is exactly the same as it was last year, correct?
It was as the same as, oh, sorry. No, your mic isn't on. Sorry. Never mind. Go on. No, go ahead.
So, the budget is the same as it was last year?
So, I think my question for you, Ms. Holly, Holly to Holly, is, geez, current fiscal year that we're in right now would have been the budget we approved. It was $400,000 to start. The year before that was $200,000 to start, and then we added another $100,000. But the current, we're working on the budget for the upcoming fiscal, it is a lot of different numbers and years and everything. We're working on the upcoming fiscal year, and what the, what this amendment will do will bring them up to $400,000, which is the same as what the current budget that we are in right now, which we approved last year, was. So, it was $400,000 last, I say last year, meaning where we are sitting here, where we were last year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose, make a motion to amend the amendment, and Ms. Mount is the numbers girl, so I'm going to have to rely on her. But rather than taking that $200,000 from the contribution line item, I would like to take it out of the line item that includes the jail bill.
I would rescind my amendment.
I'll second.
All those in favor of rescinding the amendment, initially proposed amendment number two by Holly Smith Mount, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, Ms. Walling, if you would, state your amendment.
Ken, before you speak, Holly, I mean, Sarah, can we clarify? So, the other amendment has been rescinded. It's not an amendment to the amendment. It's now just an amendment.
It's now just an amendment, correct. So, I made a motion to amend, well, I made a motion to amend the budget by moving, you're going to have to check me on my numbers, Holly.
We're going to rescind hers, and we're going to start a new amendment with yours.
Yep, yep.
Is where I'm at.
$200,000 out of line, $2,300, God, I can't even see it, I'm sorry.
2300-101.
Thank you. 2300101, Contracted Services, and move that to...
5670109.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the third amendment.
Discussion on the motion?
Discussion from council on the third amendment.
For, I'm going to make a suggestion that the Puparoni Game Show suggested that a compromise amount of not $200,000, but a lesser amount of, say, $100,000, so that the jail bill could still have an increase of 100K, the animal shelter could get 100K, and then we call it a day, and everybody shakes it out afterwards. That gives the mayor more wiggle room with...
Hang on, we're, I know you're making a point.
This is, this is...
This is you making a point.
This is my discussion.
Sure.
If that's a motion, if that will be made a motion, I will rescind my motion.
Okay.
You can make that motion?
I can remake that motion if people are in favor of it.
Okay.
Any more discussion, first, can we get any more discussion on your motion first?
Sure.
Anyone else on the motion that Sarah Walling made?
Courtney, okay. Courtney, okay.
Okay.
Ms. Sarah.
Well, it would be Tia's motion, but I will rescind my motion if Tia is making a motion for $300 for the animal shelter and $100 to stay in the jail bill. Is that the motion you're making?
That would be the motion I would make, because I would feel more comfortable doing that, so that the jail bill can still be funded and still gives the mayor what he needs. It is a compromise suggested by the Puparoni Game Show advocates, and perhaps more of our council members would recognize that some compromise is needed on the hypothetical increase in the jail bill, et cetera. Maybe this is, maybe this is where we can meet and finally start to heal this issue.
Okay, I rescind my motion and second Ms. Rumbaus.
Do we got that?
All those in favor of rescinding Sarah Walling's motion?
I don't think we have to, I can just rescind it.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah.
I don't think you need to vote.
I can just rescind it.
Okay, fine.
So, now the motion is yours and the second is mine, and that's what's on the floor.
Okay. Motion from Tia, second from Sarah Walling. Any discussion on the fourth amendment?
So, as you'll, I'll repeat it. The, currently, the mayor has suggested that we increase our jail bill money by about $200,000. It's a hypothetical amount of money to erase any possible, like, any hesitation to arrest those who need to be arrested in our community. Additionally, it's money that we can promise to or provide to the county commission so that they can operate the jail, because the county is one who's really paying a lot of the jail bill. They need that money. They're short. That's why it makes sense to give them $207,000. The county commissioners that I've spoken with have said that the, that they are short on funds for the Cabo County Courthouse, et cetera. I would not traditionally edit this at all, but again, I recognize that the people upstairs are upset, and I would ask that you would consider this a reasonable compromise, and ultimately, it's just words on paper, a wonderful narrative to provide comfort and guidance that will be administered by the mayor at his own discretion. But we could call this a day and comfort all of those people if we voted on this amendment and gave it a yes. It would be numbers and words on paper, and it would mean a lot to a lot of people, because words matter. How it's actually administered and Mayor Farrell's execution of it will ultimately prove out one way or the other. All right, that's all I've got to say about it.
Any other discussion or comments on Tia's motion? Anyone from the public that would like to speak on the, our fourth amendment, sort of?
Sorry, we all know I'm the least formal in the room, and I don't care. I'm not here for that. I am one of those people that hit the ground running. What you guys are doing is literally ignoring hundreds of people up there, hundreds of people. And the fact that you're sitting in this room and not upstairs so that everyone can join in on a conversation and you can actually hear them is insane to me. You're not listening to your people. You're not. And I know you don't care, because you're apparently not going to be up for reelection, is my understanding. So, hopefully, we have somebody who's going to stand up for what the people actually want, because it is insane to me that so many of you are willing to literally ignore the hundreds of people who are upstairs begging for this not to happen, because it impacts them in different ways. Cutting the animal shelter funding literally can cause health concerns across our populations, and it's my understanding right now, we can't talk about homeless people, but know that I will be back up here for that. I'm just asking you, as council members, to literally think about the people who you serve. It is 9:50 at night. I have to be up at 8:00 AM to teach a class at Marshall tomorrow morning, but I am still here fighting, and it's infuriating that we have to get this far. It's horrible, and it's pathetic, and it's sad, and it's power grabs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Pam Miller, the CPA, from Thursday night, when there was about 1,000 people here. I just want to say thank you all, that all of you all that are trying to throw out alternative suggestions to make, I'm guessing there's 600 people upstairs that aren't allowed down here tonight, and Thursday night, the weight of this room was so heavy. You guys have to be a lot more comfortable tonight having them upstairs. I do think you need to hear them. I wish you could feel the weight of it, but there's no way by separating the two rooms. But for you guys that are working really hard to throw out some suggestions for the budget, I really, really appreciate you trying, and I know that you will work with others on down the line and cooperating with them on negotiating. So, I, that, that's the accountant in me. The other side of this is, I was here Thursday night, okay? So, that's just thanking you for the budget and considering options, as we should be doing. The person in me is going to say, my mind is blown that you are not listening to those hundreds, I don't think anybody has said the count, I wish I actually had a count, the hundreds of people that have shown up again tonight. So, I tried to just say numbers the other night, but I have to throw that in, because they, they can't see this being broadcast live, those people upstairs, I don't believe. Can they?
Can, they, they should be.
Can they? Can they see that? Okay. No, not them watching. I'm talking about people, like, I was sitting at home watching from 5:00 to 7:00 tonight, and I could only see you all, and you can hear, you know, you can hear a little in the background or whatever, but can the people watching on Channel 24 or Facebook Live see those people upstairs? Well, I don't think that's very fair. I don't know. It just doesn't feel right to me. I, I think you, I think people need to see what's happening. So, anyway, thank you.
I'm signed up to speak later, but we're on our fourth amendment now, is that correct? That I've been following along? I just want to look in each of your eyes, I'm not sure if you're allowed to respond to me. Do you have any plans in compromising? Do you have any plans in changing your mind, saying yes to anything that is not the mayor's proposed budget? We're all, all these people are trying to come up with different ways to figure this out. Do any of you who are saying no, do you have any plans on compromising now or in the future? Can you say? Are we just going to keep throwing out ideas and nobody is going to give? Any of you guys have any plans on compromising with the people putting a hand out? No? Just going to keep shooting down every idea to help? Okay, cool. Got it. I'll see y'all later.
Mr. Chair, I've heard night, tonight, a few times saying the words "don't care," "not listening." I think we did listen, we sat there five and a half hours and listened for a night, so it's not fair to say that to us. We don't necessarily have to agree, but we are listening, we do care, or we wouldn't be here in the first place. On the first page of the budget, at the first paragraph from Mayor Farrell, is the three things laid out why the budget's what it is. And the third thing was enhanced quality of life for all residents. I say all residents again, because I believe that all residents have not been represented in past administration, and that's why I ran. This is a caring community. I've experienced it myself, and I know firsthand what this, what Huntington's about, but I also know that there's some residents who have not been represented in the past as much as others. Small business owners, residents with property have not been represented. When we talk about the jail bill, in my opinion, that exactly puts them back into play where they're represented again. And I have been out in the community, not just here. I've been out, Mayor Farrell's public community speak, his, his reaction to people and letting them talk about the budget, I've heard what they've had to say, at the expense of me home with my children. And I don't mind listening at all, but there's a group here that's asleep at 10:00 at night that has to get up at 5:00 to go open their business, and they're not here. And I do listen to them also, and I don't like the fact that we're sitting here throwing around different ideas about the budget, because the fact is, it's going to be about trust. We have a new mayor after 12 years, and we're going to have to trust. We can throw ideas out all day. So, answer her question, I'm going to deny everything we say about this for the budget. I'm going to trust the mayor at this point and go forward. He's 83 days into this, and I agree with this. But as we pull from something else, we're always going to hurt someone else to get this done. And I went to the shelter today, and I 100% agree, she's doing a wonderful job. Courtney's doing work that I would not do. But after being there today, I'm going to do more to help out. I wasn't aware of what they were doing down there. So, I learned a lot today, and I'm going to learn more as we go along this process. But if we keep pulling from other funds to do this, we are hurting something over here, and you can tell where it's coming from. It's going to come down to trusting the process with a new mayor. That's it.
Anyone else from the public on motion number four, or amendment number four?
Everything I planned to say has kind of gone out the window.
Let's stay right to where the money's moving.
I'm so sorry.
From one to the other.
Is this better?
Yeah, but I mean, stick to where the money is moving?
Yes.
On the amendment.
Yes, for the amendment. The mayor threw out some really big numbers, and it would be fantastic if those numbers were something that we could operate on. April will be six years that I have been an employee at the animal shelter. If we could operate on something even close to that, we wouldn't have a hole in the ladies' restroom of our, of our building. We would have more than three animal control officers for the entirety of Cabo and Wayne County. Three men who, for every day of the year, 24/7, have to juggle who's going to be on call. Three men with families. The vehicles that they drive, they're the leftovers of the HPD in Cabo and Wayne County. These vehicles, vehicles have been, they have been used till they are at the very end of their mechanical and electrical lives. Maintenance is ongoing and constant. It would be so nice for those guys to be able to say, hey, what you do matters to us. It's important. We value it. By not, by, by cutting this budget, you're telling those men, you're telling the employees of the animal shelter, you're telling all the volunteers, we just don't see the value. We're going to cut this. We just don't see the value. No matter how demoralized this, how demoralizing this feels, we are going to continue to do the work, because it matters to us. Those animals, the people that we help, they matter to us. Many of you sat there, and some of you, I can see that you appreciate the fact that the seats that you, that you inhabit, they're not your seats, they are our seats. You were put there. You were entrusted. Please don't break that trust. There are so many people that they're looking to you. They're looking to you to uphold what has been done. They're looking to you not to, not to jerk the rug out from under the work that has been done, to show you that, yes, there is value in what we do. We will continue to do the work. We will continue to work with everyone, no matter how, how it makes us feel, because we know that there is something bigger that we're doing than just what's happening right here, and it will continue. Huntington, to me, has been more, we call it a jewel, but really, it's more like a fabric. And that fabric is lush. It is beautiful. It is intricate, but this budget is ripping apart some of the most fragile and vulnerable threads in that fabric, and there is going to be a hole in your community. We are watching who's sitting at that loom.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
With the funding for the, for the jail bill, like Ms. Rumbaus stated, and Ms. Mount, and Ms. Walling, these are hypothetical things. These are things that could possibly happen. And what I'm hearing from folks is that, and what I would plead to people here... And what I'm hearing from folks is that, and what I would plead to people here is to compromise with things that are real instead of putting funds into something that might hypothetically happen. There are real animals, there are real people, and we do inhabit seats that we can hear people asking us to please listen to them. And so I'm personally pleading with you all to compromise, please. And to entrust funds to things that exist instead of something that might hypothetically happen.
Anyone else from the public on amendment four?
Anyways, I want to reinforce that you all are a team. Teams require collaboration, compromise, working together. If you weren't a good part of the sports team, you got sent on the bench. We're the coaches, we voted you in. A lot of you guys won by a handful of votes. One of you won by ten votes, ten. There's a lot more than ten people upset upstairs. So if you want any form of job security, listen to your representatives. Thank you.
Uh, London Donahoe, I'm a student at Huntington High. I don't wanna give out my address, I'm a minor, so I'm just not gonna do that. But, um, I want to reiterate what she had said. Because you guys are a team, and it's honestly embarrassing. As, um, as a young person, seeing adults act this way and have this level of incompetence. Like, you guys can't compromise or collaborate? I mean, I'm looking at a lot of people on here that won't even, you know, even think about voting on an amendment. It's embarrassing. I mean, you, you have a team, you coach a team, you're an administrator to school, in my school. And it's disappointing to see you, who I, you know, would expect to, you know, view as some type of leader, to inspire me. That's, your actions tonight are not inspiring. It's honestly, like, sick to me, like, it's so disheartening to see our leaders for the city of Huntington, the wonderful city of Huntington that I grew up in, learn, live to love. And you guys can't even consider an amendment that, I mean, any of these amazing councilwomen have introduced? I mean, do you not care about the animals, care about the humans? There's people and animals' lives at risk, and you guys just don't care. It's embarrassing, and you guys need to know that we, I mean, I can't vote, but everyone else in this room has the power to vote you guys out. I mean, it doesn't apply to you, but everybody else. Because you guys can possibly run for another term. And if I was in your position, I'd want to please the people. My mom's a small business owner, so when you speak on behalf of small business owners not being here, that is such falsehoods. They have the same ability to come as we did. I, I mean, I'm on spring break, but I know I would be here either way if I had school or not. Everyone else in this room has jobs, they have to be early in the morning. My mom, she's a small business owner, she wanted to come tonight, but she's my little sister. So it's not about just being a small business owner, oh, I have to work, wake up at five AM. I don't know any small business owner that's waking up at five AM to, I mean, I don't know any store or restaurant or anything that opens at five AM. What is this, like, low IQ statements? It's just like, mind boggling, that you guys can't compromise, can't work as a team, and you guys can't just, like, eloquently speak on any, like, intelligent, you know, like, words? Like, you guys just can't grasp this budget? I'm sixteen years old, I'm a sophomore at Huntington High, and I can grasp this budget. I can understand that the things you guys are, you know, looking at in this budget, they don't make sense. There's, half the time, there's no reason for it, and then you guys are just blindly following whatever Mayor Farrell wants you to. I mean, please grow a spine, please. You're, you're, you work for the constituents, not Mayor Farrell. I know that for a fact. And we have the power to vote you guys out. In twenty twenty-eight, I will have, I'll be eighteen, and I'll be able to vote. So whoever my constituent is at twenty twenty-eight, or whoever my elected officials in twenty twenty-eight, know that I will not be voting for any of you except Sarah Walling, Ally Lehman, Holly Smithout.
Hi, good evening, my name is Genesis T., and I'm not a resident of Huntington, but I'm a Huntington High School student, and I attend schools in Cabell County, so I'd like to speak on the matter. And to agree with what London was saying, um, to have the privilege to speak and complain at being tired or wanting to go home and having other things to do, I find that very disgusting because some of us are here fighting for our livelihood, the livelihoods of others. You guys aren't trying to fund homeless people, or people without homes, and animals, and you're worried about sleep, and I find that very privileged. And I'd appreciate if you guys check your plate at the door because this is getting to the point where you guys are not making decisions that need to be made, you're not representing us. And we need trust with the people who are representing our city, and we're not seeing that transparency given here to a disappointing person. And long what I'm saying, unable to guys here anymore. Trust and believe, people are seeing this, feeling disappointed, and are like, "Action!" When we're allowed the privilege when we're eighteen, so.
Thank you.
Chair, I have one, one last comment, thank you so much. Uh, just to remind everybody, what the amendment is to reduce, we're gonna allocate, increase the jail bill by a hundred thousand dollars max. That would leave a hundred thousand to go to the animal shelter line. To put this into perspective, currently, we allocate about five thousand dollars a month, according to Chief Watkins last year, on our monthly jail bill. Uh, if we add a hundred thousand dollars, we will now be doing about fifteen thousand dollars a month to the jail bill. That means we will be increasing it, the funding for our monthly, three whole, five thousand? Sorry, yeah, right, five thousand, ten thousand, fifty thousand. That's a significant increase for our enforcement to go out and force the law that we have. So, do you think by sixfold? Probably not, I don't know. But, uh, there is some money there that will be, so people might could help heal everybody, and is a reasonable compromise. Uh, and, and that's all I've got to say about that, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Chair. I, I wanna say something, I haven't said a whole lot. I totally agree with you all on the work that is being done at the animal shelter. Someone asked me the other day, "Have I ever been there?" I said, "No, I'm always working." I believe that we all have our lane. I mean, that was an important, absolutely, I do a good job, I really do. But I find disheartening. I've listened to you all for ten, eleven hours, threatening. I'm a queen of those things, almost, and look, I, I turned off war, they called my name, but see, girl. But did you all or nothing? I'm a super, I believe this compromise, baby girl, I'm with you. But what that compromise is, absolutely not. Last week, and I'm gonna say it public, I was embarrassed. I was shamed. I'm still, and never been there, like I was. But to harm, bring to our, for them to listen to what we have to say. I think it should be our minds, I agree with you, that compromise is what I'm here to you all. But does you have, it doesn't help. I, that's not, that's, that's not what I wanna do. Fifty thousand, anybody that have, let's, let's try to figure it out. You get what I'm trying to say, let's try to figure this out. Because guess what? Others is gonna come to us and want some too. Let's try to figure it out. I said before, this whole city is run by funding. Fennel, what are we gonna do when he continues to freeze? We have to wait our turn and see how this goes, in the meantime, we don't need money. So I want you to take what I said, and listen, don't think, don't think I'm the enemy. God knows, speak for me, I can only speak for me. I'm not your enemy. I'm just trying to help figure this out, just like you are. I didn't talk to people, I didn't get, go around talk, that's not me. When I come, I wanna have an open mind, I wanna hear what everybody said. Because that's fair. But I want you to hear me, I want you to hear us. So I am willing to compromise. Maybe fifty thousand, maybe something else, you know what I'm saying? I'm just trying, I, I, I don't, I'm not saying please the people, I, I think that's a little bit much. I wanna do what's right. Because sometimes what you do right don't always please the people. Let's just put it out there. I got chi, I got eight children, I can tell you that. But I'm for, in the long run, what can we do to work together? Animal shelter, low bearing shelter. All these other things we got going, that take money. Let's, that take working together. We got a whole lot going on here in Huntington, West Virginia. We need money. Where is that money gonna come from? We're on freeze, people. Where's this stuff gonna come from? I hear you, I hear you. But my head is saying, "Oh, God, where are we gonna get this money to help everybody?" I'm concerned. Just because I say no, this, or yes, or whatever, doesn't mean I don't, I'm not concerned. I feed the homeless that's walking down the street. I give them a call. Everybody has their lane. I can't do what you do. Courtney, I can't do what you do, darling. Listen, I'm scared of cats. I'm not gonna give them, give them poison and kill them either. You get what I'm talking about? That's what I'm trying to say, we all have, mine's is kids, everybody know that. And I think I'm just as good at kids as she with, with the animals. But we got, this is crazy. That's all I want to say, I probably don't say anything else. But that's what I'm trying to say. All, all of us, everybody, not just up here, but out there, up there, are we willing to compromise? Are you saying for us to compromise is all or nothing for you? That's not how this works, and I agree with you, we gotta give.
You work for us!
Yeah.
Is there a motion on any, on amendment, or anything?
Any more discussions?
Remember that they work for us.
Fourth amendment? Ms. Atkins, please call the roll on the amendment.
And the amendment is, just to clarify, a hundred from the jail bill into the animal shelter, that's the one we're voting on?
Yes, so it's a third five, it's a reduction of two three zero zero dash one zero one contracted services, contracted services under the police fund. So the proposed budget is currently five hundred and fifty thousand dollars under contracted services. So it would be a reduction to four hundred and fifty thousand. That's it. And then we, that's a hundred thousand dollars less, uh, leaving four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the jail. And then, uh, that hundred thousand dollars could go into the annual shelter line under contributions, five six seven zero dash one zero two, contributions to other areas of the shelter. It would go from two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand.
Teresa has said, or suggested fifty to the animal shelter out of the jail bill. Are you, well, I mean, are you making, are you making a motion?
I'm just talking in general, I don't know, I, I, I don't know. Let's see what we got.
Ms. Atkins, please call. Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
Miss Maum.
Yes.
Ms. Rumball.
Yes.
Mr. Schmitty, absent, Chris.
Ms. Walling.
Yes.
Mr. Archer. Mr. Arthur. Ms. Blau. Ms. Hawley.
No.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Shockley.
No. Two to five to five, the amendment passed.
Five to five, man.
At this time, we will continue with the list of people that wanna speak on the budget, Ms. Atkins.
For the public on the budget, not an amendment, correct?
Yes, this is just the general items on the budget.
Okay. All right. I've been told that the city mission is not part of that?
That's correct.
That is correct. Then I'm only supposed to be here for good and welfare. So I'll make it after one AM, y'all?
Um, I want to start the same way I started last week, by saying it remains disheartening to sit and put your thoughts together and sit here for hours because we are not a county council. I promise you, we don't wanna be here. We are begging you to do what is right and good. And so it's really disheartening to see pre-written statements read after four hours of comment and people unwilling to compromise after four amendments fail. That's really a bummer. But, anyway, um, I feel like I've heard people say they want to work with the mayor. Nobody's asking you to work against the mayor. We want you to work with the mayor, we wanna work with the mayor. But asking questions, pushing back, and not bending to the will of one person is not what teamwork looks like. So, I just really am having a hard time wrapping my brain around this evening. So I apologize for my scattered thoughts. Please restore full funding to the animal shelter. Um, I, I feel like we can say that to wear blue in the face. I can promise you that people out there aren't going away. So if you wanna be here at city council for five hours every time you have a meeting, keep doing what you're doing. Because we'll be here, we can go with shifts. So, please, do what's right. Fully fund our libraries, transparency is all we're talking about, and there has been zero. We don't know if the libraries are getting what was passed last time, if they're getting anything in this budget. Please, again, we just did this with the levy. We will do it again if we have to, if we really don't want to. You guys hold the keys to the kingdom, we just need your help. Please give micro breaks back to the council. Fifty thousand dollars is literally a drop in the bucket, and it's great for the community, and I like to see my council members being engaged and giving back and telling more people about what's going on in their districts. Lastly, I just urge city council to pass an ordinance stating that the mayor must release funding that has been approved by city council, because we are still not there yet. And I would really like for us to work together. Again, we don't wanna be here, we want to work with you. We want to be friends, and neighbors, and colleagues. And it's just really disheartening where we are. Um, I think my thoughts were probably more concise last time, I'm tired, I don't wanna be here. We need you, please step up and do what your community, the people who elected you, the people you work for are asking you to do. You work with the mayor, not for the mayor. You work for the people. Please work with us, thank you.
Mr. Chair. I would like to propose another amendment. Um, I'm gonna ask my colleagues for the numbers, but I would like to propose, from the jail bill, fifty thousand and then fifty thousand to the animal shelter. Second time. So, so what we're hearing, Ally, uh, make amendment four is to reduce the jail bill by only fifty thousand dollars, and put that fifty thousand dollars towards the animal shelter. So the animal shelter will go from two hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. And the jail bill will go from five hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. Thank you, Tia. I'm just so inspired by throwing my bone, so I'm pleading to at least throw my bone and compromise with fifty thousand, please. Discussion on the amendment?
Discussion on the amendment from members of council. Fifty K, change from the jail bill to fifty K to the amendment.
Um, it, it's, when I grew up, I mean, Chair, when I grew up, uh, people would always say like, "Hey, we should, uh, compromise, there's a fight, you gotta compromise, et cetera." When I went to school and learned about how people communicate with one another, I found out compromise is when both parties lose something. I thought that kind of blew my mind, actually. Like, if we don't compromise on this, our community, our neighbors, the sense of cohesion and a willingness for all of us to work together, we are going to lose that. At this point in time, we need to compromise. This is that amendment, this could be that turning point that brings us all together and lifts us up, gives us a clean slate to move forward, and gives Mayor Farrell a chance to administer this budget to everyone's satisfaction. This is a clean slate to move forward and gives Mayor Farrell a chance to administer this budget to everyone's satisfaction. Just approving the number change is just words on paper, but it's still up to him to sign the checks down the road. And he can and do that if we pass his amendment to his original discretion. So I will totally vote yes on this. And thank Teresa for coming up with that number.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public on amendment number five?
Um, so what I'm seeing, and I respect a lot of people up here, um, what I'm seeing is very much a chorus. Um, that's a very important way to go for a chorus. Um, because everyone that has came up with something longs to serve our party. Um, I haven't seen an amendment. This is a rich round. These are just chit-chatting, I'm not sure if they want to share with the class. Thanks. Is that what they do in school? Maybe playing in your next trip to DC maybe. Um, I don't know. I don't know. Thank you all for doing your work. Thank you for trying. I see who's interested and who's not. Um, you talk about disrespect, that was happening right there. Um, people stating the truth that it's illegal not to show this, I think that's disrespect. Um, there's, there's people on Facebook saying that children should be in bed. Uh, one of them being my daughter, who care enough in, in, in a year, she's gonna be up here, no doubt. She follows Ellie, she's coming in with him and all kinds of things, no doubt. This old thought process that kids don't have a voice, it's gonna be out. Mr. Archer, you know at school, y'all about to phase out. And there's young kids coming for y'all. So just keep that in mind.
You are in violation of the Open Meetings Act. There is no live feed. We cannot hear you. We are disenfranchised. This is illegal. We will file suit. I know there are a few lawyers in here, am I wrong?
You can tell her now.
Am I wrong?
She's wrong.
She, ma'am.
Are you supposed to have the public mean?
We have, we have done everything that we can to accommodate.
Except open the door. Except open the door.
Open the doors.
We cannot, there is still a fire code.
We have people out there that would like to hear this discourse.
Ma'am, you're gonna, you're gonna let me speak?
Is it gonna, you gonna say anything useful?
The short, if she don't get her way, she's not gonna let you speak, so.
Only laws don't apply to white men, am I right?
What are you gonna do if I don't?
This is what happens if you don't let it to look bad because there are people here and you don't plan for it, of course.
Oh, they're ten to most of your board. All those in the papers signify by saying hi.
Hi!
I'm sorry, but why does he not take it out? He has to come first.
Yeah, I guess it's okay for him to say curse words?
If somebody voting no, she called him a [BLEEP]. Called him a five head for that.
He's getting about being disrespectful at my time.
Well, he gets to go to the special door.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me, let me give you guys a reminder, I know emotions are running high.
Whose fault is that?
You don't want people to hear what you say? Is it not that good?
Ma'am, I would like for you to exit as well. There's been a point of order by city council, I will hold this meeting up until you walk to the hall, ma'am.
Maybe you should organize your meetings better. That's your job, Shockley.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I'm gonna reiterate that it started on Saturday with Councilwoman Lehman who asked for an accommodation to move upstairs. That is not feasible. There was discussions, um, what we could do.
And you told her to get lost.
And we did the best concession that we could with what we had available.
She did, you did not.
So I apologize if this is not to your liking, but we did, as an administration of council, by request, by everything we've tried to accommodate, all the we give the technology that we have in this building, on short notice as well.
Yes, could we open the doors to the hallway, Councilman Shockley?
Yes, Mr. Lehman, will you open the box?
More people favor Trump than he has got through.
If there are seats available, we don't exceed capacity, Scott, I am fine with that.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to make a motion that we just prop the doors open so people can hear.
I would say we had a problem that last time, I missed your here, what's going on?
Absolutely.
The doors come from problems.
That at this crucial time where we have a five to five vote, uh, a failed vote, five to five, and please listen to the appeal also of the city council folk who have illustrated that they do not respond to animosity. They do respond to being neighbors.
As long as they can keep it low to where we can still, they can hear us and vice versa. If it gets loud, Scott, we'll, we'll shut it off, okay? I'll, I'll try to make that concession.
If I could coach not anything at this point, then I would please try and, and coach your statements as neighbors muster as much love and consideration as you possibly can. As that might be the only say that will work at this time.
It won't.
Everything else will work.
We tried that.
You have three minutes.
Tried that on Thursday.
Um, I just wanted to say one thank you. Thank you. I love to see compromise, that's what the people want to see. I fear, microcosms of, of microcosms. We have a federal government. It's, it's a mess, and now our state governments are a mess, and now our local governments are a mess. People are emotional. We as a country are defined by the weakest limbs, and we're literally shutting the doors on something for the weakest people. I don't know about you, but I have disabled people in my family, I'm disabled. Um, animals, they don't have those voices, we don't have that ability. I'm speaking to, employ your emotions on this because people really are trying. I'm trying to compromise, I'm trying to be kind. I know that we get farther with sugar when we do with salt, but I beg my city council, I've been here since I've been a child, I wanted to lead when I was young adult, and I finally love leading, and the direction it was going, it was beautiful. Our country is a mess. The least we could do is pull our communities back together because when our communities start coming together, our states can come together. And when our states can come together, our federal government can come together. And it literally, it comes down to you guys. So please, show compromise, show compromise for your country. Because that's what it's getting down to. Emotions are high everywhere. People are, they're scared. And I know that there is apparently another plan for a homeless shelter, we haven't even touched on that, and that's what I'm here for. But these people, they matter too, their lives matter too, these animals, their lives matter too. Imagine if it were you. If you had to spend a night outside when it's freezing, Mr. Farrell, have you done that before? Have you ever had to stay hungry at night without proper apparel? I'm asking you a question, would you answer? Have you done that?
No.
Would you consider doing that in the middle of the winter, in the middle of these nights that are cold and warm?
We're, are we speaking to, the amendment on the animal shelter?
I'm speaking on both sides.
We're just talking about the animal shelter amendment.
Okay. Well, it's the same concept. These animals will be homeless, and you may giggle at me and you may think it's funny. I like your disrespect, I'm there with you. I, I implore you to think about the people that have been hurt, the animals that have been hurt. There are a lot of people that can suffer. And when those people start to suffer, we all will suffer. As a teenager, I was taught, I think it starts at fifteen thirteen, a greater love, knowing how, greater love than just to lay down his life or his friends. And it seems as though maybe some of you are living down your life for wallets. It's, maybe it's not laying down your life.
May I let you breathe once?
It's a very similar concept, and I think if you're asked, and if you follow me on Facebook, see what we do as rescue. I have learned in fourteen years that we focus on the good that we do. We focus on the positive. We don't hide the negative. Sometimes animals don't survive or outlive. We don't pretend that they're happening, but we focus on the positive because people can get behind that. And I wanted to directly respond to Councilwoman Johnson and say thank you, and to let you know that we are going to compromise. I appreciate you to vote on a hundred thousand, and we would even be willing to do fifty thousand, which is incorrect proposal. And the reason is, any positive steps that we can put forward, so I do understand and appreciate that some people have spoken this evening and Thursday, and people are upset, and it comes across, that passion comes across in a frightening way to your, to you. And I understand that. So I just want you to know that we are happy to hear that you're still willing after six hours to even consider helping us. And I still want to say I'm thankful that you are committed to making sure we succeed. And while we would have loved to have four hundred thousand tonight, still would, if you all want to think that theory. But we would take fifty thousand now, do as much as we can, and you're still going to be supporting the shelter through our volunteering, through our grants, through our fundraising. And then what we would like to see, as we suggested, down the road, if there's more money there that's not been spent, that consider allocating it like you did last year. And yes, we are willing to compromise, we are willing to be positive, and we are willing to work hard to set this right.
I just wanted to say thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, we appreciate your votes. I know a lot of people are afraid to, you know, sl- sl- slip from a majority that is so expected of you guys, but I appreciate that, and we will appreciate your vote on this amendment that Councilwoman Lehman introduced. Um, and Arthur, Archer, Blow, and Holly, please, 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 please be leaders. Please step up and do the job that you were elected to do because right now, you're not doing it. Um, we need you to step up and, you know, do this, there's no, I don't know who in their right mind will be like, funding the animal shelters is bad, I don't know, I don't know, if you're scared, like, I mean, I don't, I, I can't even validate, but my point, please, just step up, be compassionate, have a heart. I personally, I'm Catholic, and, um, I know Mayor Farrell as well, so please, let's, you know, stick to our values, let's, um, you know, do these things that are so important, and that, you know, morally should be just the basic bare minimum. Um, so please, Councilwoman Holly, please have a heart, please be compassionate. Councilwoman Blow, please have, be compassionate, please have a heart. Councilwoman Archer, please do the same, and Arthur, please do the same. Just be leaders. I know it's a struggle for all of us, we all make mistakes. You know, I, I organized cleanup, some of you organized January sixth. Right. Please, 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 we step up. We all make mistakes, and we can learn from that. We can take our mistakes and make it be better people, and we can do better than what we are doing. I make an effort to better myself every day, and I find on you all to do the same. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Walling, since you represent my district, could you please ensure I get my full time this time? Uh, Mr. Shockley cut me off two minutes early at the city council meeting on the tenth for gently insinuating that Rob Archer's faith may not be guiding his decisions on some of these matters. Um, I have video evidence of that, by the way. Um, on that subject, it does seem like Mr. Shockley's censorship was a point of contention at the budget meeting held on the twentieth. I was not at that meeting. Uh, the last time I was here was on the tenth, but I did watch the livestream, and I would like to give you all a little advice. I know tensions are running high. A lot of your constituents work in industries where people say nasty things to them, and they probably get paid a great deal less than you do. And I'm sorry, but I haven't heard any statements in this room, save perhaps two, one or two outliers that are worse than what I had people say to me when I worked in retail. Uh, I think anyone who's worked in service industries can attest to that. People are kind of going to play the world's smallest violin for you if you sit in this chamber and complain about your feelings being hurt. Some of you even claim you take people's opinions less seriously if your feelings get hurt. So, and I truly do say this with all of kindness I can muster, you are elected officials, suck it up.
Yes.
You are here to work with the people, to listen to their anger. Mr. Archer, you were not here to protect your family's downtown flower shop that is a block away from the mission. The conflict of interest I would have pointed out two weeks ago had Mr. Shockley not lied and said my time was up when it was not. Mr. Shockley, you are not in here to ensure that the fragile egos of yourself and other council members do not get bruised. None of you are here to protect your own personal projects or agendas, nor are you here to protect the mayor's personal projects or agendas. Your jobs are to listen to what we say, to find the best process with which to get these things done, and then to do that. That is what being a representative is.
Yeah.
You work for the people, not yourselves, not your families, not the mayor, whose entire argument for this budget seems to be just trust me, Buggrow. And I'm sorry, I've never trusted any politician to that extent, and I'm not gonna start now. On this, and on the subject of the mayor, if we are going to complain about the decorum of people who have spoken in this room, then we absolutely need to address the decorum of the mayor who ran away, threw all of you to the wolves, then scurried back in and tried to claim he never left when we all knew the truth. With lying tests, we are not idiots. And I do not envy your position. Uh, you are facing federal funding cuts due to whatever is happening in DC right now, and that's a whole wild thing. But the people made their views very clear tonight, they made their views very clear last week. They do not want this budget. They want animals and people to be housed in an ethical and humane way. They want their libraries to stay open, they want their parks to stay clean, they want their streets fixed, and they want AD Lewis to keep serving the children of our community. That is what the people think is important, it is your job to make that happen. Thank you.
We'd like to stick to the amendment, whether the details of the amendment will be for or against it. Thank you.
I do support the amendment to increase funding for the animal shelter by fifty thousand dollars. Now, Councilman Shockley and Archer, believe here, both business people, you run a business, you run a business, and some of you, I don't know what everybody does. I ran a business for about seven years before I became a professor. And I hired as many as sixty employees right there in the city of Huntington. We were a wholesale business, we did three, four million dollars in sales each year. And I managed this business throughout the entirety, and it was the hardest thing that I think I've ever professionally had to do. And as a wholesaler, we bought supplies from a lot of different suppliers from all over the world, and we experienced inflation like nobody's business. And I was the price setter for seventeen distribution centers across the United States. I set the prices. I saw every price increase from every supplier multiple times a year for many years as the pandemic ravaged the supply chains. In fiscal year 2021, in your proposed budget, that's the first time you funded the animal shelter for two hundred thousand dollars. In fiscal year 2021, you had revenues before grants of fifty-four million dollars in 2021. In fiscal year 2026, in this proposed budget, you have revenue before grants of sixty-four million dollars. You have ten million dollars more because of inflation, rising our property taxes, rising our sales taxes, rising our B and O taxes and everything else. You have ten million more dollars, not including any grants, no F, no ARPA money, there was never any ARPA money in this debate, there's none of that. Ten million more dollars in regular general fund revenue from 2021 to 2026. Now, you guys know about inflation, you all know about inflation. We have ten million more dollars. If you fund the animal shelter fifty thousand more dollars than you did in 2021, you are covering inflation, and that's it. And that's it. Now, you cannot justify anything less. You can't economically, you just can't. You cannot sit here and say, I'm a business guy, and then say, I can't find fifty thousand out of ten million to cover inflation for the animal shelter. If I have to come back here during the main budget, we're gonna have a very different conversation if this amendment doesn't pass. Thank you.
Anyone else on amendment? Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Archer?
No.
Mr. Arthur? Ms. Blough?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney, absent. Ms. Walling?
Yes.
And Mr. Shockley.
I guess at this point it is academic.
Yes.
So, yes.
Now we get to do it again with the mission.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've listened to a lot of people for about, I don't know, what are we rolling between two meetings, Thursday and Monday? Then I've spoken maybe about three minutes through all this time. So I want to say this, that I do believe in Mayor Farrell, our finance team, and everything to get this done. I believe there is compromise. I have a lot of respect for that lady, just to let you know publicly. And, but what Teresa Johnson said also, where there's compromise, guys, the threats is not the way to get something. I know emotions are running high, but threatening someone, and I've had inbox messages, I've had phone calls, I've had a lot of things said to me, and I haven't even said much up until this point. That's not how things get done. That's not compromise, and that's not resolved.
It's okay to threaten homeless people.
So actually now, Ms. Atkins, can we get the amendment passed? Can we get to the budget as amended?
Mr. Shockley, if I could say something real quick, because I know, how many people do we have signed up to speak? Okay, let me just say something. Not, I know that there will be folks upset that it didn't get to the full two hundred thousand dollars. I understand that. But there is a path forward in all this. We have laid out that we have eight hundred thousand dollars, or maybe now one hundred, seven hundred fifty thousand. And no, it came from the jail bill, right? Yeah, sorry, lost track on the amendment five. We have eight hundred thousand dollars in the contributions line, all right? That money is not pledged to anyone or any entity. We have a process lined out where there is a form online. It is on the City of Huntington's website, the forms, it's in there. Please, Courtney, fill it out as soon as possible. The mayor has pledged to us transparency, and we have a lot of fiscal year left. In fact, it hasn't even started yet. It starts July one. So we have to finish out this year, and then we still have another twelve months to get through. So, you know, come up, say your piece, but I know it's been a long night. I want to also say that I challenge our partners at the Cavill County Commission, the Wayne County Commission, all the villages, towns, boroughs, hustons to the haulers of our beautiful counties, that when the mayor comes to you, I expect that you bring your strongest offer with it because we obviously need some help here. So that would be my challenge to all of our partners out there in the Catalina area. I'm not asking anyone or telling anyone to trust the mayor or even to trust the process. That's not the point, because trust is built. It's built both ways, right? Between him and us, us and him. But I do want you to follow the process because there is a path forward. So tonight, regardless of the vote on the budget itself and the amendments, there's still more stones on this path, if that makes sense. All right? All is not lost. Okay?
I just want to say thank you to Kathy Burks Sullivan, Burks Sullivan. And while we're issuing partners and challenges and all of that kind of thing, one thing that was very different about this budget process for me this year is that in every other year, we've had a table set up in front of us, and the mayor had the members of the administration who had built this budget, and the department heads who had built this budget. And they spent days trying to explain it to us. And the way that you explained in, you know, two minutes or something, you know, just the reasoning behind it, that's what we want to hear. We want to hear the reason for things. When Scott told me we've got union contracts coming up, okay, legal services, I get it. But I think what is not going to build trust with us or the community is to try to rush through things, to think that one person can, you know, get up here and in three hours explain to us what to do with seventy-eight million dollars. It needs to be a conversation, and it needs to include the people who built the budget and who execute the budget and who do all of these things because they are the experts, and we're not the only ones that need to listen to them. It's the community, it's the administration. That's really important. So that's my piece.
So what's on the table right now? Is the budget amended to take fifty thousand out of jail, out of jail, and put it in a dog or animal shelter? A sentence I never thought I'd ever say. Just want to make sure that's clear, what we're now discussing.
Ms. Atkins, who's the next one on the list to speak?
So I was going to talk about my client, which is the unsheltered population, but I thought I overheard that we're waiting for that for good welfare.
Yes, ma'am, it is not on the budget.
It should be.
All right. I'm allowed to wait.
Ladies and gentlemen, to be clear, we are talking about the budget and items within this budget as amended.
And not things that should be on the budget.
The jail bill, too, the animal shelter. If the line item is not in this budget, it can be covered under good and welfare.
Could we also, would we be able to say, Shockley, that if everyone is, doesn't have, if there's nobody to speak anymore on the budget, then we will take a vote on the budget, given different other factors?
Yes. Another thing is a fair statement.
Good evening and almost morning. All right, so I live in District Six, the best neighborhood in Huntington, I believe. Ms. Mount's district, right up the hill from Gallery Village, Mr. Shockley's district. I work in Ms. Rumbaugh's district. I, my kids go to school, great schools in Huntington, on the border of Ms. Mount's and Ms. Johnson's district, and up the hill with Mr. Archer at Huntington High. So I don't know all of you, but I feel very connected to you. And the first thing I want to say is that I am very grateful to all of you. It is a thankless job to be a public servant. You all have taken a pounding. You were on how many hours of how many days of public hearings? I don't even know. But I'm very grateful to you. You're not getting rich here. I understand that. No one's, it's not a lucrative job to be a city councilperson. And I appreciate the work you've done for our city and our budget. And that brings me to our first point, which is our budget. The mayor proposed a budget, which is now amended, but the budget belongs to the people of Huntington. You are here to represent us, and this is the budget of every citizen. The budget belongs to our people. We've already talked about this. And it is your responsibility to work together, as you have tonight, for the people. Good things happen when you work together, and I have some proof of that. I spent a long time as a reporter covering city and county government, and I covered the Steve Charleston and the Canal County Commission. And in that time, I ran a lot of budgets. You know, I spent hours this week reading the City of Huntington budget and the Cavill County Commission budget. And you guys have money, and that is commendable. I'm trying to answer the question, why are we cutting services? Why are we sacrificing when both the city and the county have a very healthy budget? Kudos to you, that either of you have been on council before, because you put us here in this position. We're in, we're paying our bills, and we're saving money, and that should be celebrated. We are in a very good financial condition. We have been for many years, the best in a very long time. The facts show the money is there because you put it there. So it's disingenuous to say that we're in a bad financial place or that we have to pick and choose what we fund. The narrative doesn't hold when you look at the facts. The jail bill, which is the responsibility of the county, has decreased every year since 2021. This budget must first support the people of Huntington. There is money for public safety. There is money for economic development. There is money for infrastructure. There is also money for healthcare and the jail bill and public works. There is money for the landfill in Ms. Holly's district. There is money for economic development in Ms. Blough's district. There is money for the children of Ms. Johnson's district. There is money for our libraries and our animal shelter and our city mission. So the mayor asked what changed, and I think that's a great question because the money is there.
Thank you. A year and a half ago, I admittedly knew very little about town politics. I didn't know much about the day to day. I didn't, I knew even less about community grassroots and organizing. But I started attending public meetings back then, and I met a lot of like-minded individuals, three thousand five hundred or so. And we made real change for this community with the parks and the libraries. And speaking of the library and this budget, I still haven't heard anything about the money that they're due from that INR from last year. And I think this community has made it very clear how we feel about our libraries. And I think as we go forward, we need to be making sure that the libraries still gets the same money that they've been getting the last few years. So let me speak plainly to everyone here tonight and to the people at home or work or upstairs who are not there anymore because the livestream's not working. So all the rogue livestreams that are going on, I just want everyone to know that you can't let anyone, not this council, not people on the internet, tell you that you're being too emotional, too angry, or too passionate. Don't let anyone make you feel less than because you feel strong emotions about our shelters and our libraries being defunded. You're upset? Good, we're going to need that. You're passionate? That's even better. We're going to need that, too. So no matter what happens tonight, and as we can probably tell where the vote's going to go, this isn't the end. I want everyone that's listening to know that there are grassroots organizations to join. There's doors to knock on, and there's flyers to hand out. The fight is just beginning, and we are going to need all of you here and on the stream to make a difference. Animals may not vote, but their owners do. And as we have already seen, it is still possible to make a difference with real change. Our spirits aren't broken, council. We know exactly what comes next, if I recall.
This may best be, even though it's a budgetary item from the last budget, for the city mission. If I think better, we're giving it off.
Okay, you're going to say for good welfare, that's fine, as long as it's not not in this budget?
It is the budgetary money for the mission that we've not received.
That'll be good welfare, because it's not on the actual budget that we are talking about right now.
And that may be the question I asked Mr. Nevin.
The twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and you're talking about funds that are needing to be received, that'll be in good welfare.
I'm for the budget. I thought it would be better if we went on ahead and gave the mayor an opportunity to do what he wanted to do. All of you sitting here at one time or another said that there's going to be continual changes down the line, and yet you just had to change something. You've all admitted, it doesn't make any difference what you come up with, somebody's going to be unhappy. So why do you tell us we're going to do this and everybody's going to be happy? That's a lie. You accuse other people of coming up here and lying to you or about you. You shouldn't do that. Budgets, whether it's municipal or home budgets, are all based on priorities. You don't spend on candy and vacations if you haven't taken care of your light and your electric bill or your water bill. It's a matter of priorities. Our mayor put together a good budget with good priorities. And now you have some folks that want to teeter with that, but they don't want to take responsibility for it if it goes wrong. They're saying, well, we should have did this, and we should have did that. Or they're pointing the finger at the mayor, but it's not all on him. And you say, well, he's not the guy that's controlling things. But you don't want to take responsibility for those things when they go wrong. Myself, I think we should go ahead and pass the budget. There's a time constraint on this. I know as the councilman has told, not the councilman, the lawyer has, the attorney has told us before, we have to submit a budget to Charleston in a certain time. And then after that, if there's going to be other amendments attached to it, there's still a time period for that. And if you mess around and get to the point where it's aspiring because of aspiring debt, because there's penalties involved with not getting the budget out and getting it up to Charleston on time. Why do you all this infighting over small things when you can take care of those after it gets to Charleston? Everybody has to have their piece. Myself, I wish you would just go ahead and pass a budget. Because me as an entrepreneur, or one being an entrepreneur here in Huntington, I can't do that if I don't know what the city's going to be doing. I can't base my budget until I find out what y'all want to charge me. Just the way we run our households, we got to run our government. Take care of first things first. Stop the big room, pass the budget. Thank you.
After high school, I moved to Colorado. I returned home pretty early in 2018. I lived at the Medway area. I didn't want to pursue my address or something. Growing up here, our homes were rented to multiple times. While we were in high school, electronics, bikes, meat, and fireworks were my operations. I often felt unsafe. Having spent time away, I've accomplished a handful of tasks there. Safer walking the streets, businesses are thriving. And I love Southside neighborhood, and it goes so much more clearly than it did in the past. When it comes to the budget, I'm a strong advocate for fully funded and functioning animal shelter. Having advocated for my dog, or having adopted my dogs from the shelter, I see firsthand how important these services are, both for the safety of the animals and for residents who want to enjoy the parks and streets. The most successful cities in America provide well-funded animal shelters in return since its contribution through volunteering and helping fund the state's expenses. While I'm not a budget expert, I still devotes more to Mayor's salary, which was raised to around one hundred and fifteen in 2019. There's a clear irony that Mayor earning double the average wage of a resident without some chance he seeking to cut assistance for those who came before him. In his salary, it's significantly higher than other cities such as Asheville, Carolina, Boulder, Colorado, and Cincinnati, Ohio. This is an area where we can reduce it. As a resident, I'm concerned about budget transparency as well. Finally, I just want to ask, do not let fear in undercut funding for future projects influence your decisions. The community and shipment, the inbound, and that are supported through effective mutual actions. Thank you.
She was escorted out and asked to leave. So I don't know if she's returned.
She's right there.
She's right there. She wants to know if she's allowed back in.
She's not allowed back in.
And she's seated at the podium?
Because I said so.
I think if she...
Jesus Christ, dude.
She was outraged and got a board report, but now she should get her right to speak at the podium, and she gets on a board again. Procedure was she was out of order then, and now she should be invited back to school.
Mr. Chair is there? Legal precedent here that we can rely on at all?
Not that I know of.
Okay, I just wanted to...
I don't know that when you invite somebody else back in after they've done their move.
I think that's, it was up in the air. Why don't we just like show a hand, like?
Or like, we all could vote on it, like a motion or something.
She's been removed.
So one man has power? So one man has power?
Is towards the budget. Might not be a 100%, but it is towards it. My name is Claudia Zambos. First, I just would like to say that unlike some of you on the council, I deeply value the First Amendment. I'm so thankful for the fundamental right to assembly and progress. It is our job and duty as citizens to make known our stances and our priorities. It's your job as council people to ensure that the will of the people is carried out, not the will of the mayor. This includes the people who criticize, mock, curse, and disapprove of you. That is public servitude. The guise of safety is being used as a scare tactic. When you speak of safety, are you talking, are you taking into consideration the safety of the homeless in which this budget will offend? Because unhoused individuals are statistically more likely to experience violence and have crimes committed upon them. Are we including them in this obsession with public safety? There are studies that show how unsafe it is to be unhoused. The San Diego District Attorney's Office released a statement stating that homeless individuals are 19 times more likely to be murdered, as just one example. And I implore you to investigate and look into what actually contributes making cities safer. It is not cutting public services and their funding. It isn't leaving people on the streets or pushing them out of downtown or blaming them for problems. It is a smart economic decision to properly fund our shelters. Taking care of our unsheltered community is essential. I know we've talked about what is essential, that is essential for a city community. It's essential to the betterment of our city. I find it concerning that our mayor thinks otherwise. I find it concerning that he's drumming up fear and hypotheticals to suit his own agenda. These future hypotheticals are hindering present-day progress. Things that can be done to fix our homeless communities' problems today, not in the future. I would love if you guys took that into consideration. I have a feeling it's falling on deaf ears. A lot of people's minds are already made up. I get that. I would implore you to maybe do your own research, to look into these studies. Have you guys researched what numbers are making cities better? What funding is making cities better? There are literal studies and studies and studies and statistics that say putting your money towards these public services are helping make cities safer. So the budget doesn't reflect that. You guys are ignoring it. I don't understand.
Point of, uh... In order, um, we actually, the point of order that we voted on was to remove the guy in the big blue shirt who was cursing.
And the other... Right. One girl.
But that wasn't the same girl.
She had blonde hair. Kate has curly hair.
It's a blonde.
The other one was also had a scar.
We were waiting on the...
She wasn't in the wrong order.
Sorry, I'm really tired.
You, you just said, I'm telling you to step ass. The point of order was for the petite woman in the black shirt and the tall guy in the blue shirt. Voted on it before she voted.
The point of order was for the one with the blonde curly hair. I thought the point of order was...
Oh, my God.
For the man who was...
It was for both.
It was for the two people that were in the altercation against the back row.
Excuse me, the discretion to make those determinations. Council may vote on the point of order, but the chair also has discretion. So, Mike, can I...
Sounds like, you know, authoritarian to me, whatever, what do I know?
Ms. Atkins, I missed person's feelings.
Can I make a statement? Like, I swear, I'm not trying to be whatever.
If you're here to speak on the budget right now, and you have an item to speak on this budget...
I'm trying to help you, I swear. The news people are gone.
It's okay.
But you, you do need to...
The public can't see it because they don't, we don't...
We, we broadcast, we don't broadcast through the news. We have, it, it's on a public access channel.
Okay, okay.
At this time, I will close the public comment portion as we have satisfied the sign-in sheet. This time, we will vote on the budget as amended, as you requested earlier. Ms. Atkins, we please call the roll of item number 10. The budget as amended.
Mr. Sweeney absent, Ms. Walling?
Yes.
Mr. Archer?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Blau?
Yes.
Ms. Holly?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
No.
Ms. Mount?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
And Mr. Shockley?
Yes, and the budget is approved. Ladies and gentlemen, we still have good and welfare. I'll type you up right now. At this, at this point, this completes the initial part of our meeting on all items except for good and welfare from the public. Ms. Atkins, if you will.
Monty Fowler?
Yes.
We are at the good and welfare portion of our evening, so we cannot speak about things that have been on tonight's agenda. Anything else is fair game.
Yeah, you're fine.
Well, my whole, uh, my whole concern is... The city, yes.
We can talk city mission.
Robert Neames. According to what was opened up tonight, I think it's safe to say that I can say what I want to say. Because I'm born to anyway. I've been homeless. I've been a drug addict. I've been an alcoholic. I've been in prison. But through faith in Jesus Christ, God gave me another chance. I'm a big believer in second chances. I'm a very successful member of society now. I'm a pastor of an outreach ministry that comprises of several different churches, members coming together. We've been serving at the city mission in the parking lot every Saturday for two years this month. We feed them, we clothe them. I preach the gospel of Jesus to them. We love them. Now you serve playing games with people's lives. They are people. Somebody's mother, somebody's father. Somebody's sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, they're people. And I've heard comments made that people like me enable them. You know what an enabler is? It's somebody that helps their addiction along. I don't have enough drugs. I've been sober for almost nine years now. Christ in me that saved my life. I've seen lives changed down there in the past couple of years. I've seen people get saved. I've seen people come to Christ and never turn back. I've seen people get housed. I've seen people leave there and still come back on Saturdays to help my ministry. I've got to know a lot of those people. Some of them that were there when we started are still there, and I love these people. And I love the people I work with. We're not affiliated with the mission, of course. Well, I'm an outreach minister. But I do know some of the people in the mission. And a friend of mine said, Mr. Mary told him not to make you look bad, not to make you look bad. My personal opinion, you're doing a good job of that yourself. To think about these people as people. I understand the mess, I understand the criminal element. But there's also the criminal element in city government. Police departments.
Preacher.
Law offices. Wherever you go, there is a criminal element. Yep. I know several of these people that have, that don't do drugs, don't drink. You might wanna think about the Garden Park fire the other day. This can happen to anybody at any time. The people that lost their jobs during COVID. House fires. Car wrecks that kill family members if you don't have anything left to go home to. It can happen to anybody. I lost a son. February was a year.
Give me sir, that's your five minutes. Anything but what was on the agenda this evening? I'm here to talk about what's going on at Home City Mission. I mean, Huntington City Mission. I've been in ministry work there. I don't, I'm not employed by Huntington City Mission. I'm not even on the roster as a volunteer. I've been going there for about a year and a half, maybe a little more. Right on location, right on the grounds, right there, we call Ground Zero. I represent a ministry called Break Every Chain, Speak Life. We're a Christian, non-denominational. We like to refer to ourselves as hope dealers. We represent the hope dealer, Jesus Christ. His hope, his, his care to show people that we're gonna treat you equally. Been right there on the grounds, on the outside, close to the chapel. Inside, doing ministry to these people that are in severe need and homeless. And I started hearing about this building, Mayor. This project that was gonna meet the needs of the people, right there? That was gonna provide the place to go use the bathroom, a place to do laundry, a place to take a shower, a place to get out of the elements. And then I learned that they're even, it was supposed to offer mental health care. Everybody was excited, Mr. Mayor. Everybody was looking forward to this because this was addressing the needs. And then, I started hearing about it, the project's been shut down. The, the foundations was laid. All the preliminary things was in place. And my understanding is that $250,000 has already been spent. Is that, you know, the government's about waste, aren't they? Why do you wanna waste $250,000? Plus, I heard that the money was already allocated to complete this project. And I started hearing, well, the mayor's shutting it down. The mayor's shutting it down. The mayor's shutting it down, and I just couldn't believe that. Whether the mayor or whether the city council shut down something that is so essential to these people's needs.
Yep. Yes.
And to all of them, all walks of life, all lifestyles. I couldn't believe it. So I called the mayor's office. I wanted to meet with you, Mr. Mayor, because I wanted to give you the benefit of the doubt. I wanted you to explain to me how that makes sense. Now, what I've heard is, well, business owners are concerned about the criminal element and the things it got on. Well, how is shutting down a building that's, that's addressing those issues, Mr. Mayor, directly, personally? Fix that. Sir, please stay at the podium. Please stay at the podium. I will, but sorry about that. Yes. So I'm a person that deals with common sense, with logic. And to just shut that project down, and now, just this past Saturday, I walked to the front of the chapel. The people was all huddled around with a look of bewilderment on their faces. Hopelessness even more than what they already deal with. And I saw a sign on the chapel door. This is God's house, Mr. Mayor. This is where God does His work. Who is it that has the power or authority or to think that they would shut down the business that God's taking care of in that chapel? You, sir, don't have that authority, according to God. And I would appeal to your heart. I would appeal to you, sir, to change the course for the, for the, these people, these needy people, these people that are desperate for a little attention, desperate for a little help. Council members, how can you allow this to be shut down? I called the mayor's office, I said I need clarity. I understand $25, $250,000 has already been spent. I understand that I've been hearing this on the streets, that the money's been allocated to, to finish this project, and bam, shut down. Please, please, do whatever you need to do to get this project back on its feet. Mr. Mayor, please, now change your heart. Because releasing people back on the streets is not gonna address the issue.
There's a powerful spirit. We believe a lot of the same things. I have spent, as I've told others, some may not have been here, I have spent half my life now, 35 of my 70 years, as a director of Huntington City Mission. Blessed to be able to do it. I'm the program director. I mentioned the other night, I'm the lawyer on the executive committee and the finance committee, but I'm also the program director. I established the children's program in '16. The solar program raised through federal monies under the Infrastructure Act, $400,000 to solarize entire city blocks, saving us 40,000 a year, feeding tens of thousands of meals. And also, a program, another program I created, Farmers for the Hungry Program, sent Chad Love to evacuate the legislature twice to change the law so that we could give farmers 200 to 300% of what they get on the open market after tax. We had 51 cows last year free of charge. Eating tens of thousands of meals. In 2018, the mission fed 9,000 meals a month. Things got worse. We are this day, this month, and every month, procuring, cooking, and feeding 23,000 meals, everybody. We are centrally housed over there. We believe that due to the national scene, it's gonna get a lot worse. what we had was that budget the gentleman talked about. And we had the budget to construct Low Barrier Shelter. We were asked in the last administration to temporarily, two years or so, house these folks in our chapel, Dr. Thunderbird's chapel. And I'll comment on something he said quickly in a moment. I was a pallbearer at that man's funeral, a saint. When it came time to build that chapel, cousin, cousin, my first cousin, Pastor Pete Davidson, the last executive director before Mitch Webb, asked me, "Can you help with the stained glass windows?" I bought them and donated them. That's our chapel. But it's been so many people in there, and 70 people on top of 20 cops, and it was getting out of control, but we were asked to maintain that until we could build the Low Barrier Shelter. We raised through grants, through this body and the... We raised through grants, through this body and the mayor, $1.9 million to do it. The ARCA funds, $1 million. The Shrimball directed $100,000. HERSA grant, $500,000. CDBG, $300,000. Honeyton Foundation, $20,000. A million, $920,000. We were in the process of, we've already laid money, architects, foundations, spent a lot of money, and signed a lot of legal contracts based on this help that this body helped us with to raise those monies. Marshall Health put through the one grant through the city as it had to. And we brought it down to where the mission was going to have to raise, and we will. $58,000 will do that. Here's the problem. We've got a new direction. These people, the sign you talked about, we're told is being shut down. No more money. The last administration's paying the money for the employees there. We'll have five employees, maybe have to land off. But we'll work them in if we can. But we were asked the other day to at least go till, keep, in operation till the ninth of the month. These people are going to be back on the street. You're going to see them. Because there is no building yet, and there's a plan, and I'm trying to cooperate with the mayor. And I really, genuinely want that. But I've got a job to do. So here's the bottom line. I'll close. Here's the bottom line. What has been done is $710,000 has not been given to us. We've already put our dead end, we've already put our money in the ground, we've already signed the contracts. And if you allow that, and don't force that $710,000, as was approved, as we relied upon, as we then indebted ourselves, not only have you run off the individuals, but you've bankrupted the city mission. When SARS comes, they come on a single spot. It's been in the tides, Shakespeare said. Please don't allow that.
I'm here to speak for the overnight shelter at the mission. This place gives shelter for over 70 people each night, and to them, this isn't just a shelter. It's a lifeline. Closing it would not only leave them without a safe place to sleep, but would also create a ripple effect to the rest of the community. 70 people, of 70 lives. Mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, veterans, people struggling to get back on their feet. Where will they go as their shelter closes? I urge you to prioritize compassion, these people's safety, and the well-being of our entire community. Let's not turn our back on 70 of our neighbors.
Good evening, or morning.
Yeah, good morning, works. It's always somebody's morning somewhere. Good evening, Council Gina Turner, 1438 Linn Street, 25701. And I'm pretty sure the next day, as you're going to get sick of my face. But let's have some fun. I would like to discuss with y'all also the Low Barrier Shelter. Like Terry said, and many others have said, putting people out on the streets will end lives, sir. End lives. I've lived homeless in a lot of places around this country, and I've seen lives ended by these types of policies. It's not acceptable. Not giving people the potential and helping them get into housing doesn't just not realize that person's potential. It doesn't realize what they contribute to society, what we can get out of their potential. It is a symbiotic relationship, and we ain't doing that right at all right now. We are not treating the neighbors that are on the streets, we are not treating the least of us how they should be treated. And how a society treats the least of their society says everything we need to know about. I currently am a Marshall student in the BSW program. As you just heard, I have been homeless. I was homeless for 10 years. I've only not been homeless for two. And I've made it to a BS, I'm almost to my BS heavy, I graduate next year. Okay? I've also am a veteran. I belong to a whole lot of the intersecting vulnerabilities that will be put on the streets if this Low Barrier Shelter does not go through. I am a veteran, sir, just like you. Just like you. You never got into my position though, did you? Did you ever make it homeless? Have you ever been in recovery? Have you ever had any of these experiences? Legit asking you a question. Have you had any of those experiences? Thank you. That's all I can do now. Poverty is a barrier to people pursuing their dreams, their passions, their purpose in life. Denying that, like I've said, does not just deny that person, it denies the rest of society what good they can do for other people. I have looked up some things about Housing First initiatives, which Low Barrier Shelters can help implement. The HUD exchange files calls Housing First highly effective. VA.gov says that Housing First helps reduce time into placement from 255 days to 35. I got rehoused here in 30 days. 30 days from homeless to housed and a Marshall student. In good standing, in 30 days. It is evidence-based. They have higher housing retention. There are reduced ER visits, which fiscally is responsible for this city. I'll talk to you dollars, man. Fewer ER visits, fewer hospitalizations, shorter periods of hospitalizations. Also, I'm disabled, y'all, so we'll throw that in there. Housing First is evidence-based, and Low Barrier Shelters are the first step to getting Housing First initiatives. There's already at least some organizations that do this in this city. Volunteers of America, Harmony House with the Rapid Re-Housing Program. These need to happen, and you cannot stop funding to the Low Barrier Shelter and expect that to happen. And you cannot police your way out of poverty. I would like to also remind the mayor that his recall immunity expires on July 2nd.
Just give me a sign. I like this sign, so. Show the room a sign. Hi, my name's Savannah Weekly.
It said save the mission, sorry about that.
And I'm employed at the city mission. I'm one of the social workers at Anchor of Hope, which is our behavioral health clinic. Some of you guys have came. I look, I'm here just to invite you guys to just come look at what the mission has to offer. All of you, you come to Anchor of Hope, it's a nice place, we have coffee. So, exactly. Come here, we have to say, or just come interact with your constituents, your unhoused constituents. They, I've registered a ton of them to vote, so remember that too, they can vote. So, just come, come meet with them, come meet with us. They're very concerned right now. They're scared. Their home's being shut down. Their place of community is being shut down. We're all tired right now. We're shaky. I know I'm shaky and tired, but we have a place to go home on our heads. And a few weeks, they won't.
I worked one of the world's largest corporations for almost 30 years. During that time, the company opened several multi-billion dollar facilities, both nationally and internationally. The success of these facilities was based on risk assessments and planning. Planning included not only the construction of the physical facility, but also the development of the surrounding area. This was crucial for the development of the workforce that would operate the facilities. One of their first steps was to ensure that there was adequate housing and educational facilities in the surrounding area. They accomplished this by making capital investments in existing entities and funding the startup of entities that did not exist to meet the required services. Part of Mayor Farrell's stated focus is to combat the homelessness crisis. Reducing and/or eliminating the funding for the city mission and low barrier housing is not conducive to combating the homelessness crisis. Scholars and other governments, both nationally and internationally, agree access to addiction treatment, skills training and employment health, mental health treatment, and the availability of temporary housing are crucial to the goal of reducing homelessness. The center of government, nonprofit, and private services that assist unhoused is the downtown area. Diverting funds from the stated focus of combating the homelessness crisis to relocation of services without a well-planned improvement to the services is a needless expenditure of limited capital. As a ship's captain, with over 30 years of experience, I know that planning is crucial to success. I'm sure that you know, with your experience as a weapons systems operator, that proper prior planning prevents poor performance. Part of proper planning is communication of the risks and the mitigations to those risks, to the stakeholders. Mayor Farrell and your administration, you have not effectively communicated your plan to the stakeholders, which include the public, the business community, the entities providing services, and the unhoused who rely on those services. Unlike the mayor, unlike, until the mayor provides a cohesive plan, developing input from all the stakeholders, you should maintain funding at the current city council allocated levels to prevent exacerbating an already critical situation. As a captain, I know sometimes my job is to say no, but as we've talked about tonight, part of that job is also to listen to the people that work with you. Thank you for being there.
If I can, can I speak? Are we still allowing people to speak that haven't signed up?
We went by the list. Did you not sign up the list? None of those guys?
I wasn't thinking of speaking earlier, but I would like to.
Would you like to do now?
I will be the speaker. And the people that signed up to speak earlier, but wanted to put these on the topic of Are you leaving, Mayor? Can I get a mail?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure. I, my family lives here, has always lived here. I was born in Golden, Ohio, four hours away from New Orleans. Just moved here in October. Speaking on the mission. I have been close to homelessness almost my whole life. I have been in and out of jobs, haven't, for whatever reason, I've been laid off. New, things just haven't worked out. Well, I wish it were. Of course, I wouldn't want to be in that position. Currently, I'm close to that position as well. I know, I don't know how everyone here is, but if you were in that position, one day, one week, one month, with not knowing where you're going to get money from, where you're going to get food, what position would you still be considering the things you have been with me? It's a simple question. Why take the money you promised away? Why not support those that are in need? Why? It's been asked why by a lot of people. It will continue to be asked by a lot of people. As you can see, we don't care how long it takes, how late it gets, but we will continue to be asking the why. Like I said, I moved here in October. Family's been here my whole life, their whole life. Grew up in the 50s, was here for the plane crash, and have been here since. We have ties to this town, this city, and we want to see it flourish even more. But taking opportunity away from others that don't get that because people don't care. People don't want to see them do well. They want to cast them aside, move them elsewhere. Why? Is it because you want to see more money in your pockets before you want to see others doing well? I don't know. That's in your heads, that's in your souls, in your hearts. But I will leave it with this. What would Jesus do? What would Jesus do? He wouldn't be taking funding away from the lesser. He would be helping the lesser.
I had a lovely speech here, all about community and how we come together and all the struggles we've overcome and all of that, but honestly, just sitting at this meeting has been a struggle. And I just don't have the energy to read the speech. I just want to say one thing. The holding money for the current and the future Low Barrier Shelter is not who I am, not who I want this city to be, not who, not what members of this city council approved. And so, if, if in fact it is legal that the mayor can withhold funds that have already been voted for in this fiscal year, then that's undemocratic and it's a problem. And that if funds are withheld and services are pushed out of downtown for the unhoused, I will be here at every meeting until 2:30 in the morning, until whatever it takes. That is not the city I want to live in. Thank you.
Hello. I also am opposing the cuts to the Low Barrier Shelter and the withholding of funds and then the shutting down of the current Low Barrier Shelter, or the emergency overnight shelter, sorry. But I just really, I mean, please have compassion. I know it was a struggle for animals, have compassion for them, but hopefully, I mean, animals are so important, but I mean, humans, like, please, 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 please. I, I've grown up volunteering at the Honeyton, or the city mission and, you know, putting together backpacks. My mom's did that, raised thousands and thousands of dollars to put backpacks for little kids who didn't have the resources that I know I had. And I really, really, really hope. I've known Mayor Farrell for years and years and years. I've known, like, since I was in kindergarten, I think. And, I mean, I went to St. Joe, I've been grown, I've been raised with values to play those before myself and care for those that, you know, need, need help. I'm fortunate enough to have a house, I'm fortunate to have all these resources, but I have so, so many people don't. And on, on Sunday, on Sunday, we, me and Ally and dozens and dozens of other young people and people in our community came to the Honeyton City Mission to clean up the litter that was there. We cleaned up over 70 pounds of trash. And the only person that came was Holly and Ally. They came to our meeting, they came and they helped us. Ally gave the belt off her belt buckle to a homeless woman whose pants were too big. That's the hypocrite Ally is, and I really hope Mayor Farrell will do the same. I don't think he would, honestly, but I mean, I'm not going to speak for him. I really hope he would do the same, but from his actions and from his policies, I don't think that's true. I mean, please, the, any morality that you have, please deep, deep in your heart and realize that there's people, you guys are way closer to being homeless than you are to, you know, being, I don't know, a billionaire or whatever, I don't know, whatever you guys think is making you not want to support a homeless population, but... making you not want to support a homeless population, but please, 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 dig deep within yourself and try to find some compassion, some morality to support our unhoused population, Mayor Farrell, please, please, please. And know that, I know there's a lot of people that voted for you that won't do it again because there was a lot of moral people that were, you know, were lied to. I was on the campaign trail, I've seen you so many times on the campaign trail, and I heard the things you said. You said, "I'm going to solve the homelessness crisis, all these things, I'm going to solve this." And I read the business survey responses, and they don't want homelessness to be worse. They don't want more unhoused people on the streets. That's not what they want. But your policies are doing the opposite of what this survey, and some of those survey responses were vile. I mean, I was kind of like grossed out by some of the things people were saying, but even what they were saying, they want homeless people, you know, they want the homelessness issue decreased or, you know, solved. Twenty, seventy people on the streets is not doing that. And I know that the business owners don't want that, my mom's a business owner, I know so many business owners, they don't want that. The people that elected you thought that you were going to solve this issue and be compassionate. I know a lot of people that, you know, are in, you know, work in our essential services and stuff like that, and I know they probably won't be voting for you again. And I know that the recall is on July 2nd.
July.
Yes. And I know I will be knocking every door. I'll knock every door in October, September, November, and I will knock a thousand more to make sure that we have leadership that we deserve. Huntington deserves better leadership. Huntington deserves compassionate leaders. We deserve, you know, heartfelt leaders, people that care about their community, their constituents, and Mayor Farrell has not done that. And I, I really wanted to have an open heart, I wanted to have an open mind. I was like, you know, I didn't originally want you to win, but I was like, maybe, I've known this man, I'm sure he has some values, I know he has compassion in him, but that hasn't happened. So unless by July 2nd, you completely transform to a new person and decide, "I'm going to fund this low-barrier shelter and I'm going to help the unhoused population," I will be, just no. I will, and I have, I have like thirty young people that I know are going to do the same thing. So I mean, if I dump five hundred doors, times that by thirty, that's fifteen hundred, right? Yeah. Or no, that's more than that. That's a lot more than that. So, yeah, it's late, so like, thanks for doing my math, but yeah. Know that I will knock every door in this city and know that we will get, I mean, I don't, we need way more than five thousand votes, because I don't, or five thousand signatures, because I don't know how many the county clerk was going to approve. Yeah, we need more than that, because you know they're not going to approve every single signature, but I will do whatever I can, I will rally up as many people I can to make sure that we have leaders that we deserve, and Mayor Farrell, and how many of you are here? Two, three, and like five of you are not compassionate leaders. So please, 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 fund the low-barrier shelter. Do you guys promise, mostly promise to do? So please, 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 stick to those promises and just be compassionate. That's what I'm asking. I want to get home, so I'm going to leave after this, but thank you guys for your time and know that everyone here will vote you out.
Anyone else from the list? Ladies and gentlemen, I will...
I really don't have to speak, actually, and I kept saying that I wanted to speak on homelessness, so I'm looking forward to give a little bit of time. I'll do my best to take less than five.
I'm sorry if I skipped you.
It's okay. I can't believe that we're having this discussion, actually, as people who, I would presume are somewhat educated, that have some sort of education and background, like you would know that not housing people actually leads to more crime. Huntington has, I've been here my whole life, as I mentioned earlier, we went to being one of the worst cities, we were worse than Chicago per capita when it came to murders. We were really bad. It was really bad, and it was actually really scary. And then after a big hospital stay, I had moved, a lot of things happened, I went to a worse part of town because I had to kind of build myself back up. And there, I dealt with a lot of homeless people, I dealt with a lot of hungry people. A lot of those people would come to my house, they would knock on my doors, wanting something, needing something, asking for showers, things like that. Closing these things means that people don't have access to hygiene. Could you imagine not taking a shower after walking around outside all day in the dirt when you don't even have clean clothes? You might be able to go bathe in the Ohio, but let's be honest, it might be a little toxic. Where these people get their food and their water is beyond me, but what I do know about the homeless population is, I guarantee that they have each other's back better than any of you that have each other's backs in this room. Homeless people are, man, they're tight in their community, they will help each other. But what is it with our communities now that, do we just hate homeless people? Because from my understanding, West Virginia is trying to pass something along the line to like, if you're caught three times, you are fined like three hundred dollars. Is that, is that why we want more money for jails? Is so that we can hate poor people because they're poor? Is that what this is? Like across the board, I'm literally just asking a question, I want to know, because as somebody who doesn't necessarily look sick or look like I shouldn't be able to work, I struggle, even though I do work, and I'm trying my best to become a mental health counselor because our city needs it, and I see the call for our community to help these people. That's how we get better as a community. We have more services and now we have less problems. I see less people in the streets. It's less scary to walk outside at night. It's less terrifying to walk from here to my car later because of some of the actions that our city has taken, and I just can't believe it's being done. Like, I have a sister who is now a nurse, who at one point came to me and begged me to watch her children for her parents, so she could stay at the homeless shelter so that she could get a place to stay for her and her family. These things are necessary to get people back on their feet. How can you imagine, like, how are we supposed, what, what do you think is going to happen, sir? I, I'm asking literally, I would love to know, and I'll talk to you after, because what do you expect to happen if you take this away? We're going to have seventy more people out on the street breaking into cars, breaking into homes. And I say this as somebody who's lost hundreds of dollars of things, living out of my car, living out of my car at one point, trying to make it as a student. I have done nothing wrong to be in the position that I am in, but I am closer to homelessness than many people. And it's not a fun thing to admit, but I'm going to admit it because it's not just me, it's a lot of people. And as our country gets worse and as inflation goes up, we're going to have more people, and it's only going to get worse. So what are you going to do when it's more than seventy people? What are you going to do when it's a hundred people? What are you going to do when it's a hundred and fifty people? It's going to get worse, so the point is, is if we keep this, we can help keep people moving along this path of getting them into housing, which statistically shows works, and usually they don't come back to homelessness. It's a mental health crisis, but it's across the board, and we don't, we can't close these things. It would be devastating. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else in the second round? Is that it?
We don't have.
Close the public portion of good welfare. Last time I started on this end, let's take the gel, start with DC.
I don't really know where to start. Just because we don't all see eye to eye, or we don't all agree, we don't all vote the same way. I didn't hear one person up here saying they don't have compassion for animals, or they don't have compassion for the homeless, or they don't have compassion for whatever project or whatever nonprofit. I've donated thousands of dollars, hundreds of hours to many different organizations across this city. Nobody said that I'm not compassionate. And for what Courtney does, she is to be rewarded. I would highly recommend her to do anything. I can't do that job, and she's to be commended for that. But just because I voted no does not mean that I don't appreciate what she does and what she has to offer for this community. But also, I'm new on this council, as several of us are. Mr. Farrell is new at being a mayor. Like he said, we're eighty-three days into this. Nobody's even had a chance to fail. So I don't really appreciate this, it's whatever, I put myself in this position, people can say whatever they want, but it's not really fair for anybody to say that we have failed or we have failed a specific group or whatever, or Mr. Farrell has failed, because we actually haven't even done anything. This is the actual first thing that we've done considerable as an elected body. So technically, none of us have failed at anything. And Mr. Farrell has, along with the, you know, the people in administration, they've worked on that budget very hard since day one that he came into office, actually prior to that, actually, but I think they started working on it right after he got elected. He didn't do it on his own, he had other people in the administration to help him. It's not his budget, it's all of our budgets, because we're all here in this city, and nobody's claiming that it's his budget. He does.
He did.
He says. So anyways, I'm giving him the chance to do exactly what he campaigned on, which is exactly what he's doing. And as far as the animal shelter goes, we all know that, everybody has said, when they need more money, when we get the budget squared away, when they get an actual legal binding contract, because right now the contract they're operating on is expired. And it has been expired for many years. So I mean, technically, like Tia said earlier, technically, we don't have to give them zero dollars because the contract is null and void. That contract they have right now is...
Let's take the joke, speaking of animal shelter.
Well, okay, but I'm just saying, it's, I'm trusting the mayor and I'm trusting his team to do what they said to do, and I would appreciate that the public also did that. And then when we, when we fall short and we let you guys down, let us know. We don't have a way... Exactly what we are.
Ladies and gentlemen, we just sit up here and listen all night long, please give the same respect to this council.
I'm tired, so I...
Mr. Jason.
I just want to thank everyone for expressing their opinions and also recognizing that we are all in this together. And if we can learn anything from tonight, the second time we've come together about this particularly tumultuous issue, is that connecting with your neighbors in a harmonious, kind, considerate, connecting kind of way is going to work better than attack. Not saying you can't attack, I'm just saying it worked when you tried to express your heartfelt love and a chance for connection and confidence. Thank you all for everything that you did, it is incredibly important. And honestly, I'm just blown away and honored to have witnessed it, and I'm honored to have been up here for this experience. And it is twelve thirty-nine in the morning, and I'm, thank you guys. Thank you. So I just have a few things. I'm just kidding. It's twelve thirty in the morning.
I wasn't going to catch you off this one.
I'd probably just slap happy and delirious at this point.
Mr. Jason Harvey.
I just want to thank all of you all for coming out tonight. I do know there's a lot of people that have misconceptions, misunderstandings. I do appreciate the mayor and staff, with the finance team that did come up with that. I do appreciate that you all please understand that we're all trying to do the best we can as well. I know that everybody's passionate about certain things, and we are as well. You know, I heard about alliances and things like that and all of these different things. I will keep you all night, but truthfully, we all represent a district, our alliance is to our districts and to our people, and I do thank you for pouring out your hearts tonight, I really, really do. And I do believe that the mayor will move forward with helping everybody as we get along, get some assets in, get some money going. I just hope that everybody can try to do the same thing and just understand that. Thank you very much.
Mr. George.
Yeah, I have quite a few notes written down. First, I just want to thank London, I think that he's probably left, and Sunrise Huntington for, I mean, he's a sophomore at Huntington High, and he rallied thirty volunteers to come to the city mission and pick up seventy pounds of trash in an hour. Most of the people who volunteered were high school students from Huntington High, from St. Joe, from Powell Midland, from Spring Valley. And you know, it's, with everything going on, it's just super encouraging. I mean, I started community cleanups when I was in the baiting club at Huntington High. So, I mean, that was the start of everything for me. And so, to see these young leaders putting in the time, to come to the city mission, and to see young people showing compassion and speaking to individuals that were there and to help out. I mean, there were some other adults that were there to volunteer, which is also super encouraging. I also just want to thank boots-on-the-ground that we have for people working at Harmony House, the city mission, SPECTO, Mothman Ministries, that are out there taking time to make food, donate food, donate items and be there. I cannot imagine being on the street and being unsheltered. It is a very personal issue. I have helped re-house people in a job at Branches Domestic Violence Shelter. For me, in eighty-three days, trust has to be earned, and for me, I was taught by a single mom that actions speak louder than words. And so, the actions that I've seen, trust has to be earned for me and for the constituents that I've, that I am listening to and that I am hearing. I will always support every neighbor that we have, we are all neighbors up here, we all have to be able to work together. I hope that the right thing is done with funding that I personally voted for, for the city mission, for INR. These are people's lives, and I have to be able to sleep at night, and I'm going to go home to a bed. I had a choice to go purchase gas today, and I had a choice to pick out my outfit that I'm wearing right now, and some people don't have those choices. And we have to remember that and be compassionate. And that is all that I'm asking, is that I want to work as a team with everybody, I want to be able to listen to our community, and for us to come up with a more compassionate solution than closing an overnight shelter and leaving people out on the street. I had a twenty-five-year-old message me today saying he will have no place to go. And that bothers me in my heart to know that there are sixteen- to twenty-five-year-olds and other people that are veterans, that are sexual assault victims, that are going to have no place to go. And I really hope that there is a solution that we can all work at together.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd be remiss if you didn't sit here for how many hours now. My vice chairman here, Mr. Todd Sweeney, is not with us. Please keep him in your thoughts and prayers, as he is trying to get some health issues taken care of. I don't do this enough, I know some of the others do, so I'll follow their lead. Ms. Kim Williamson of the Galler Neighborhood Village would be happy that I shared that our cleanup will be on Sunday at Hillage Square. I'm trying to make a habit at every meeting to mention more things that our neighborhood association is doing, so, and that's a great, twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty with lunch.
With lunch. Ladies and gentlemen, if it's not at least sixteen, eighteen, five, I am in trouble. So just want to let you know. But other than that, I get that everyone has a difference of opinion. It doesn't make either person wrong. I truly feel that everyone in this room upstairs, here on this council, in the mayor's office, we have one goal, we're all wanting to make Huntington better. Okay? Everybody has a different path on how it gets there. I agree to compromise. I agree that compromise. I agree that this council finding some unity and coming together, whether that be working on more projects together, building trust and trust in what does good plays, that we have to have mutual trust and build relationships. And that is very important because I'm a lover, not a fighter. Ladies and gentlemen, I, and I want to say decorum one time, because if you're doing the drinking game at home. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll entertain the, the German.
He made it through.